Hello. How are you? Remember FBI Academy? An invocation. We did the FBI Academy together. Yeah, it was pretty fun. It's like, uh... Once a day, I'm like...
Really?
Yeah. I want to do it. This is...
Good morning. I will now call the January 28th, 2025 General Legislative Session of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors and the Redevelopment Successor Agency meeting to order. We would like to take a moment to acknowledge the land we call home. There are communities in the San Diego region that face unjust conditions and circumstances related to the environments in which they live. The tribal nations of the San Diego region are one example of a community that has historically faced such injustices. We acknowledge the harmony that existed between the land, nature, and its original peoples, who have since endured displacement, persecution, and systemic oppression. We pay our respect to the unceded territory and homelands of the 18 tribal nations in our region, the most indigenous county in the United States, from four cultural groups: the Kumai, Deguayo, the Luceno, the Kupenyo, and the Kauei. We aspire to learn from indigenous traditional knowledge and experiences in addressing the injustices of the past. Andrew, please call the roll for today's session.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Montgomery Stupp.
Here.
Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer.
Here. So we will now have Rabbi Lori Koski deliver the invocation. Following the invocation, Holly Kempler will deliver the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Good morning, esteemed members of the Board of Supervisors and my friends. We gather today with a shared sense of purpose and a deep responsibility to serve the vibrant communities of San Diego County. As we reflect on the weight of our decisions today and these changing times right now, let us be reminded of the timeless words of the theologian Martin Niemuller. "First they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a socialist; then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a trade unionist; then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Jew; then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out for me." This poem was written by Niemuller in the aftermath of World War II as a reflection of his own silence during the rise of Nazi power in Germany. It powerfully illustrates the dangers of indifference and the moral imperative to stand up for the rights of others, even when those others are not directly part of one's own group. It is a poignant reminder of the importance of speaking out against injustice, especially when it begins with marginalized communities. These words echo a profound truth that challenges us to consider the responsibility we have for every individual, regardless of their background, their beliefs, and their status. Today, as you deliberate and make decisions on behalf of this county, let us remember that each of us has a voice, and each voice is valuable. Let us recognize the vulnerable and the marginalized, who may not have the same platform, and let us be their advocates. May our hearts and minds remain open. May our actions reflect the dignity of every human being and every person who calls San Diego home. In this spirit of unity and responsibility, we seek wisdom, compassion, and foresight for all our deliberations, and we can say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the proclamations. We will... If Supervisor Anderson is ready, we'll begin with his proclamation honoring San Diego FC inaugural season. Accepting the proclamation will be the San Diego Football Club.
Come on up. Good morning. Oh, just right behind...
I tell you what, would you like to... Normally, I get to sit to you at the end, but I'm gonna let you hold it right now.
You know, I am so excited. I'm thrilled to celebrate this historic milestone for San Diego County as we celebrate the kickoff of the San Diego Football Club's inaugural season. For far too long, we haven't had an outdoor soccer team that has done an incredible job. This team officially begins their season on the road February 23rd against the LA Galaxy. Boo. Our first home game is scheduled March 1st against St. Louis City SC. I had to ask a technical question. Why are some FC and some... Because I understand FC, but I had never heard of the term SC before, so when you get a chance afterwards, be sure to ask them. I just want to let you know, I plan to be there for the opening, March 1st. But I want to make sure everyone knows that Apple TV and MLS Season Pass allows you to watch their first game on the road. San Diego FC has built an incredible coalition with their state-of-the-art performance facility and the Right to Dream Academy, all located on the Saquon Tribal Reservation. The Right to Dream Academy is part of a global initiative aimed at empowering young people through education, leadership, and soccer, inspiring a generation of youth to chase their dreams both on the field and off the field. The excitement surrounding this team is undeniable. They have already laid a foundation for success by fostering a culture of teamwork, sportsmanship, and community pride. And I want to take a moment to personally thank Tom Penn, CEO of SDFC, Chairman Cody Martinez of the Saquon Band of Kumai Nation, Brad Tremeny, Zephyr Partners, and the Ownership Group for giving young people a wonderful future between Right to Dream Academy and sponsoring a world-class soccer team that we all can root for here locally. I also want to thank your Community Impact Director, DK Ahniuh. I am the worst person at pronouncing names, so I hope I did that justice, for all their help coordinating today's event. I'm proud to welcome San Diego FC to San Diego County and have no doubt that they will be an incredible asset to the region and give us some incredible and entertaining games as we crush the other teams. So I'm gonna read the last paragraph on here. It says, "Be it proclaimed by all the members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this 28th day of January 2025, that they commend the San Diego FC for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and do hereby declare this day to be San Diego FC Day throughout San Diego County." Now, this is the first one they're gonna receive, but when we bring back the trophy, there'll be many more. So I just want to thank you all. Would you like to say a word?
Thank you, Supervisor Anderson and all the Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much for this wonderful recognition and proclamation for the San Diego Football Club. The last two years has been an amazing journey, and we're very excited to bring something so very special, a professional men's soccer team, to San Diego County. It's been deserving of it for so long. My tribe's role in our ownership role in bringing the academy to the reservation and a new history, a new chapter in the history of the Singing Hills Resort, which was the site of a historic Kumai Village pre-contact. It's just an amazing thing for the tribe, amazing thing for the people of San Diego, and we just want to thank you so very much, Supervisor. Thank you.
Excellent. And we normally don't do this, but I'd like to invite my colleagues if they want to get a picture before they were champions, so they have one after they become champions.
And we actually have a gift, but I'll turn it over to Tom. Do you want to say anything? We have the official inaugural jersey for each of you as a recognition of your service, and we aspire to be a club for the entire county. So we've toured the entire county. This isn't just a club for the city, it's for the whole county, and we're honored to be here. So we've got...
Me.
Thank you.
This is clearly for us. It's much thinner.
If you could take a picture, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, my pleasure. Can't be doing it. Come on down with your...
This is how we bring everybody together through sport.
She, you know, she plays soccer. She's fired.
She played in the TSCs, right?
She's trying out for the team. So we'll see if she makes it.
You can all slide in here. I'm gonna hold the backup so they know, so they can see my name.
This is so cool.
There we go.
You got your... Those are great.
That's for you.
What was the shirt?
Big smile. Okay, I got it.
Go ahead, and then we'll just wrap it up.
Couple more. One more.
Now we got one more.
Welcome to the club.
Yeah, I got like a...
Anyway, that's my stoppage of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for helping me out.
Enjoy.
Good idea, though.
Thanks for stepping up.
Of course, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
That was fabulous. Maybe we can all wear our matching jerseys to work one day?
We'll win the playoffs.
Playoffs, okay. That's a big expectation. Okay, so the next proclamation will be given by myself and Supervisor Montgomery Stupp honoring Lunar New Year Week. Accepting the proclamation will be Jason Pagio from the Asian Business Association and Alan Tran from the Vietnamese-American Youth Alliance. Okay, fantastic. Happy Lunar New Year. Y'all, come up. Happy Lunar New Year, everyone. Today, we kick off the snake in exciting time to celebrate new beginnings, prosperity, and unity, and I think we have a small performance. You want to kick us off? Okay, well, that was incredible. The Year of the Snake is all about wisdom, charm, and transformation, qualities I think we can all embrace this year. Plus, some pretty incredible people were born in the Year of the Snake, like Beyonce, Muhammad Ali, and even Bob Dylan. So if you're a snake, you're in legendary company. And as we gather to celebrate this joyous occasion, we also reflect on the amazing cultural traditions that make this holiday so special. Here in San Diego, we are fortunate to be part of a community as vibrant as it is diverse, where traditions like Lunar New Year enrich our lives and bring us closer together. This year, a huge shout-out goes to the San Diego Vietnamese Youth Alliance as they celebrate their 20th anniversary hosting the annual Tet Festival, which is a three-day-long family-friendly celebration showcasing their dedication to empowering Vietnamese youth and preserving cultural traditions. Viya's work in leadership, education, and advocacy inspires all of us. So be sure to check out this year's Tet Festival starting this Friday at Liberty Station. We also want to give a big round of applause to the San Diego Asian Business Association. Their commitment to supporting Asian-owned businesses is vital to our local economy. By creating opportunities for entrepreneurs to thrive and grow, ABA has made a lasting impact on San Diego's economic landscape. As we embrace the wisdom and charm of the snake this year, let's also honor the resilience and contributions of those who came before us. Together, we can build a future filled with opportunity, understanding, and prosperity for everyone. So I am wishing you, all of you, a healthful, joyful, and successful Lunar New Year. May the Year of the Snake bring us all transformation, peace, and greatness. And now I'll turn it over to Supervisor Montgomery Step.
I think we need to bring the Lucky Lion dance more often. I saw some of you smile that I've never seen smile before. So, thank you. Thank you for bringing all of you up into this chamber. We need it. Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, and good morning, everyone. Happy Year of the Snake. I think I read somewhere, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there are many attributes of the Year of the Snake, and one of them is self-reflection. And so I think that's perfect timing for where we are now. I would like to thank the Asian Business Association and the Vietnamese-American Youth Alliance for being here today to receive the proclamation for the Lunar New Year. I had a really wonderful time celebrating with you all this weekend to kick off the New Year. In addition to marking the beginning of the New Year, I love that the Lunar New Year signifies a fresh start. It really is time to cherish moments with family and celebrate good fortune. And going into a new year, I always like to look back on the good fortune that happened in the past year. In 2024, I was happy to be a part of ABA's unveiling of the new Convoy Gateway Sign in the Asian Empowerment District. This celebration was an important milestone for the Asian Empowerment District as the sign symbolizes the cultural and economic contributions of the AANHPI communities in District 4 and beyond. I also had the honor of welcoming the giant pandas into District 4 at the San Diego Zoo at the House of China, and I'm grateful to the zoo for collaborating with their conservation partners in China to safeguard the panda's future. The pandas are absolutely beautiful, super cute. If you haven't visited, please do. Please consider it. Also, now, we also now have an AANHPI representation at the federal level with Derrick Tran winning the 45th congressional seat representing Southern California. I am a strong believer that representation matters. I think all of our experiences matter. And right now Congressman Tran is the only Vietnamese-American to sit in the United States Congress. I say all this to show that the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities are strong and flourishing. And I'm grateful for the good fortune that this community brought last year, and I look forward to the good fortune they will continue to bring this year. Lastly, I'm gonna thank everyone a safe 2025. Year of the Snake. With all of the fires, all of the big changes in almost all levels of government, we must protect our family structures because they are a place for stability and unconditional support. So thank you, everyone. And with that, I'm happy to present this year's Lunar New Year proclamation, and I'll read the last line. Be it proclaimed by all members of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this 28th day of January 2025, that we commend the Asian Business Association, San Diego, and Viya for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County, and do hereby declare the weeks of January 29th through February 12th, 2025 to be Lunar New Year Week throughout San Diego County. Congratulations.
Well, thank you so much. On behalf of the Asian Business Association of San Diego and our four directors, want to give a sincere thank you and Happy New Year. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, Supervisor Montgomery Step, couldn't have said any better regarding the gateway sign, the contributions of our community, Supervisor Anderson and Supervisor Desmond as well for acknowledging our contributions to the region. I think it goes out saying that California leads in so many ways. Just a couple of years ago, California was the first state in the nation to declare Lunar New Year a state holiday. And so it's fitting that we're here to be able to celebrate this week for our community. Something of note, I'd like to say that by 2030, the census has it that the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander communities will be the most immigrant communities here in the San Diego County region. And for the folks that we represent, those small businesses throughout our region, we can't underscore their economic contributions and what they provide for really the quality of life for all San Diegans. There are over 50,000 Asian-American-owned businesses throughout the county, and they represent about 100,000 jobs. And that economic impact to our region is over $5.5 billion. So you look at, you know, when we all... A rising tide lifts all boats, and certainly being able to support every community in this region could really create a really meaningful and lasting impact for all San Diegans. So thank you for your support. Happy Lunar New Year, and give it up for the CCBA Lucky Lion dancers.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all.
The next proclamation will be given by Supervisor Desmond honoring Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Accepting the proclamation will be Lisette Islas, CEO of Lifeline Community Services, and Mabi Castro, Chief Impact Officer, Lifeline Community Services.
Appreciate it. Come on in, come on in. Well, good morning. It is my honor to recognize January as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Actually, it should be January through December, but this is the month we recognize it. It's inspiring to have with us today organizations like the Stronghearted Native Women's Coalition and Lifeline Community Services who are raising awareness and leading the charge in both prevention and survivor support. Their approach has been with tailored services is crucial for helping individuals rebuild their lives. Vista's Lifeline Community Services and Project Life, which stands for Living in Freedom from Exploitation, serves as a countywide leader in combating human trafficking through prevention, intervention, and survivor-centered services. The Stronghearted Native Women's Coalition raises awareness, educates, and provides technical assistance, training, and supportive services for survivors, including the cultural and unique barriers facing Native Americans. They both aim to ensure anyone impacted by human trafficking can receive individualized care and understanding the impacts of the trauma and incorporate cultural and linguistic needs. San Diego ranks as one of the top spots for human trafficking in the country, not a moniker or anything we want to be proud of at all. Unfortunately, we are in that position, but it's a stark reminder of the vulnerability that exists in many areas here throughout the county. Building awareness is key. When companies understand the signs of human trafficking and when people just themselves, when we're out in the public, if you pick up a sign or something like that, you think something might be amiss, you gotta speak up and report it. So they're building the awareness is key. When communities understand the signs of trafficking and how to report suspicious activity, they play a vital role in combating it. And whereas the county of San Diego, we are committed to recognizing and honoring those organizations that are dedicated to the best ideals of public service, that Lifeline Community Services and the Stronghearted Native Women's Coalition are one such, are both worthy organizations. So therefore, be it proclaimed by all the members, all four of us, of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors on this 28th day of 2025 of January, that we commend the Stronghearted Native Women's Coalition, the Lifeline Community Services for their outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the citizens of San Diego County and hereby declare January to be Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And again, I'm gonna say January through December to be Human Trafficking Prevention Month throughout San Diego County. We really appreciate your efforts in bringing up this tough, tough subject, but being able to fight it and to help people that have been victims of it. So I appreciate it. I'm gonna have Lisette Islas come up and, from CEO of Lifeline Community Services, gonna give us some remarks.
Good morning, and thank you for the recognition, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Lawson Reamer, Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Montgomery Step, thank you for having us here today. My name is Lisette Islas, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Lifeline Community Services. It's an honor to be here with you in recognition of Human Trafficking Awareness Month. At Lifeline, we serve more than 20,000 individuals every year, including youth, adults, and families, meeting them in their most vulnerable moments and helping them reach their highest potential. Our Project Life team, which stands for Living in Freedom of Exploitation, works tirelessly to assure that survivors of human trafficking have the resources to break from what, to break past what can often feel like insurmountable challenges to regain their independence. It takes an average of seven attempts for a survivor to break the cycle of exploitation. Let's let that settle in. It takes an average of seven attempts. I can talk at length about the reasons why, but basically it boils down to two reasons: trauma and economic challenges. Fortunately, our Project Life team is there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, ready to answer the call. In addition to providing critical mental and behavioral health support, the Project Life team provides financial and workforce development services tailored to each individual in our program, assuring they have the economic strength to assure their freedom. When survivors arrive with us, they often have been stripped of their identity, have had their credit ravaged, and have no economic means with which to support themselves. We help them successfully recover identifying documents. While this might seem like a simple task, getting a driver's license and social security card can be very difficult when you have no proof of who you are. In fact, every step towards independence can be more challenging than one might think. But our team helps our clients open bank accounts, rebuild their credit, get jobs with career paths...
Can we pause for a second? Do we know what this is? Sheriff?
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
We help them graduate from college by homes and in some instances even open their own businesses. Once they're part of the Lifeline family, our doors are always open to them. If they hit a rough patch, even if we haven't seen them in years, we're here to provide therapy, gift their children winter jackets or shoes that are needed, help them pay rent, or find them leads to a new job. When we say we're partners for life, we mean it. I'm really proud of our Lifeline team. They are highly skilled, compassionate, and grounded in community. We've been serving San Diego for 52 years and have been combating human trafficking through both prevention and intervention for more than a decade. I want to acknowledge my team members here with us today. Mabi Castro, Chief Impact Officer, Eric Fokler, Director of Philanthropy and Communications, and the incredible leaders of Project Life, Melissa Hopp, who's our Director of Anti-Human Trafficking Services, Simone Van Horn, Program Manager for Project Life, and Holly Kempler, Clinical Supervisor for Project Life. I can't say enough about the admiration I have for them and the work they do on behalf of all of us who live in the San Diego region. It's important for me to add that we are not doing this work alone. There's a strong network of organizations dedicated to fighting this illicit market. Today, we're accompanied by the Stronghearted Native Women's Coalition, Keely Linton-Gallardo, Executive Director, Timothy Reese, Community Outreach Coordinator, Heather Halona-Alexander, Public Policy Director, and Summer Elliott, Housing Services Liaison. It's a privilege to share this space with our partners who are focused on addressing human trafficking in tribal communities. Native Americans are victimized by human trafficking at higher rates than the rest of the population. The Stronghearted Native Women's Coalition addresses critical issues such as domestic violence, sex trafficking, and the epidemic of murdered and missing indigenous women and people within the California's tribal communities. Their mission is to foster an informed, peaceful, and interconnected community rooted in stronghearted values. Their work emphasizes the unique barriers faced by Native Americans, ensuring that every survivor receives the care, respect, and understanding they deserve. It's truly an honor to share this space with you. I encourage you all to learn the warning signs, stay informed, and help stop human trafficking. If anyone listening to me today needs help, please call 760-842-6526 or visit lifelinecs.org. We can offer you resources and support. Thank you once again, Supervisors, for spotlighting our work and sharing this space with us today. When we work together, a future free from exploitation becomes possible. I'll now turn the mic over to Keely Linton-Gallardo for further remarks.
Hoppa, good morning, everyone. I am Keely Linton. I am the Executive Director for Stronghearted Native Women's Coalition. I am Ipe Nkupa from the Mesa Grande Band. And Stronghearted Native Women's Coalition has worked for over 20 years, or almost 20 years, within the tribal communities, both here in San Diego County and Riverside County. And we provide services for almost all of the Southern California region. We have a shelter and safe home and have worked with Lifeline and other partners to combat... to combat, to address the issues of sex trafficking within our communities for almost over a decade. And I just wanted to point out too that the shawls that we carry today are representative of the national colors of awareness. So we have purple for domestic violence, teal for sexual assault. We have our white rainbow color shawl to address the violence within our Two-Spirit LGBTQ community, and red for sex trafficking, murdered and missing in our community. So thank you so much for this pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on subject matters within the board's jurisdiction, but that is not an item on the meeting agenda today. The only action that the board may take is a referral to the Chief Administrative Officer. Under the board's rules, speakers can speak once per meeting for non-agenda public communication. That means either at today's general legislative session or at tomorrow's land use legislative session, but not both sessions. Speakers may select which session to address the board at their own convenience. Additionally, in accordance with board rules, any discussion items with 10 or more speaking speakers... Sorry, excuse me. Additionally, in accordance with board rules, for any discussion item with 10 or more speakers at the chair's discretion, individuals may have one minute to share their opinion. Today, we will be attempting to balance the needs of finishing this agenda on time and ensuring that all speakers have a chance to voice their views. So we will be ensuring that everyone can speak for two minutes unless there are 20 speakers or more. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be given one warning. After that one warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Reminder, according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the allotted time for their comments. To better facilitate the meeting, we will have five speakers in person, five speakers by phone, and the rest of non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's session. According to the board's rules of procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clap, clap, stomp feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. Andrew, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 21 requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, nine in person, and 12 requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As the vice chair indicated, we'll be hearing from the first five speakers in person. All the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will have two minutes to address the board. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'll invite forward the first three individuals, Pam, Crystal Irving, and Leslie Ann Masland. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Hello, good morning. My name is Leslie Ann Masland, proud SEIU Local 221 Executive Board Member, bargaining team member, and equally proud librarian with the county library system for 10 years. Libraries are the last safety net for our marginalized communities and residents trying to navigate the maze that is county services. We provide safe respite for the unsheltered during the day when shelters are closed and expanded service hours for sibling county departments like child support services on weekends for accessibility, and our local access centers when disasters like wildfires strike. We can also find you that one book with the blue cover that you can't remember the title of, but really want to read. Supervisors, we have shared with each of you petitions with more names of 1,500 SEIU-represented county workers and community members that urges you to stand up for county services and the workers that provide those vital services to your constituents. We need a contract that uplifts county workers, increases recruitment and retention, improves county culture to purge toxic workplaces, and ends the wasteful contracting out that weakens our government and muddles the services residents desperately need. What we want, a contract that addresses the steeply rising cost of living in San Diego. And when we want it, now. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Pam, January 25th, Fox 5 News border report, "A Body May Wash Up." That was the title. A suspected smuggling boat capsized in Ocean Beach expelling 30 people with at least two people trapped inside, one requiring CPR. It was mentioned there may be a dead person. The survivors just walked away, not caring about the individual who died. Many locals acted heroically to help until first responders arrived. January 23rd, Fox 5 News, "A hiker was shot and robbed by suspected cartel members near Hakumba." According to CBP, the hikers were approached by two armed individuals who commanded them to walk toward them. When the hikers refused, the suspects reportedly opened fire on the hikers, hitting a U.S. citizen in the leg. The hikers were rescued by Border Patrol. The gunmen were inside the U.S. in San Diego County. The gunmen were not taken into custody but were observed and tracked back to the border where they crossed into Mexico. CBP describes the suspects as terrorists. Tara, Monica, which individuals do you support in these cases? Do you welcome the survivors of the capsized boat who disregarded the dead person and just walked away into the interior of our county without accountability, allowing them to apply for asylum and receive multiple free benefits from us? An American citizen operating a boat that capsized resulting in death would be under investigation. Tara, Monica, do you offer your care and concern to the injured hiker or do you encourage the foreign perpetrators to return to our county illegally to be protected by your super sanctuary policy and receive freebies? The super sanctuary policy must be revoked to save Americans and legal residents. By the way, Joel, you missed the vote on December 10th. Do you support or oppose the super sanctuary policy? Yeah, don't look at me like that, answer.
The next speaker is coming forward. I'll invite the remaining speakers in person, Driscilla Willis and Alan C. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Crystal Irving, and I'm proud to serve as President of SEIU Local 221, especially as we're in contract negotiations. Every day in DC, we hear a new plan to dismantle government and create the conditions that would hinder or even make it nearly impossible to provide quality public services. And that is a strategy to show that government and public services are broken and that it doesn't work. And here in San Diego, we have an obligation and we are committed to creating a county that works for everyone, members of SEIU and the community alike. And not just because our community needs it, but to show the state and the country that government can work. This starts with investing in the workers that provide critical public services to our San Diego families and community. Wages, benefits, and working conditions that attract the best and brightest who are committed to providing good quality services. That also includes listening to the everyday experiences of our members, the experts of the services that we provide, as well as community members who have received these services. Our goal in this negotiation is to win a fair and strong contract for our members as well as improve the reach and services that we provide to the communities that we get to serve every single day. This morning on your way in, we provided petitions of over 1,500 members, who signed the petition advocating for fair wages and a strong contract. We look forward to engaging in this contract negotiations with you all. And just know that SEIU Local 221 is all in to win. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Yet the purple shirts won't stick around for fire prevention for the rest of the community. Less than 1% of these purple shirts, you need to represent the people.
Can you please?
Senator, I'm sorry, Alan C. Andrew, thank you so much. We talked at length about incorporating a remote, the video. You mentioned what's not fair to the seniors. Well, guess what? If you go to this and remove these speaker slips by the survey that only people online can fill out to take the survey, that is wrong. No, we must maintain these speaker slips and only these speaker slips so nobody who has a headline through the remote laptop gets in front of the senior that only has access right here. So please, we need to maintain this. And also, what's the video Santa used? Somebody's tuning that. Remote, when you do remote meetings, what's it called? Somebody? Yeah, the teleconference meeting, what's it called? Somebody else, I forgot what it's called. But you know, the standard teleconference meeting instead of the ridiculous system we have now. So right now, for someone to do it by remote, they have to go online. So first off, they can't get online. They have to register which agenda they want to go to. Then they have to watch the video, which is like 15, 20 second delay. Then they got to time their phone to speak. So allow the remote, the video, I can't remember the name, but the standard video. You know what I'm talking about. Zoom, yes, Zoom. Santa has Zoom, we're so antiquated, why do we have Zoom here? Why not? Because Zoom is so convenient. One website, click, raise hand, you control it here and there, and then everybody gets in the queue. Every voice is heard that wants to do remote. The telephone system is so ridiculous. One website to log in, one website to watch the video, 15 seconds. Yeah, you see what I'm talking about. So please, consider that. So I guess I'll talk about the other things later. I'll yield back, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Driscilla Willis. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm here today to address the ongoing mistreatment and bullying of staff at the San Marcos Library, an issue that has been allowed to persist for too long. Libraries are the heart of our communities, but the toxic environment in this workplace not only harms employees, but also jeopardizes the library's ability to serve the public. The failure of leadership at the San Marcos Library starts at the very top. Those in charge have continuously allowed this mistreatment to go unchecked, creating an environment where bullying is normalized and staff have no meaningful recourse. When Helen Robbins Meyer served as our CAO, we saw accountability and tangible progress. Problems were addressed and staff felt supported. Since the leadership transitioned to the new CAO, Ebony Shelton, however, everything seems to have stalled, leaving employees abandoned to suffer in silence. I urge this board to take immediate action, to hold leadership accountable. This isn't just about addressing individual incidents. It's about fundamentally changing the culture that enables this mistreatment. Staffs deserve a workplace where they feel safe, valued, and respected. And I'm asking you to make that a priority. We cannot afford to let these issues continue unchecked. The people who serve our community through the San Marcos Library deserve better. And I trust you would do what is right to ensure accountability, fairness, and a path forward. I'm asking for a meeting from anybody that can help us, anybody on that board, including you, Ebony. We need some help over there at that library. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, in accordance with the board's rules, but we'll be hearing from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'll remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We will start with our first caller.
All aboard. Let's continue with the California Constitution, which keeps being bent out of shape. Article 9, Section 1. A general diffusion of knowledge and intelligence being essential to the preservation of the rights and liberties of the people, the legislature shall encourage by all suitable means the promotion of intellectual, scientific, moral, and agricultural improvements. This means not imposing a type of education. Please note that it includes moral improvement, which putting graphic, sexual, or gender-bending books in schools or libraries is not. Article 10, Section 2. The waste or unreasonable use or unreasonable method of use of water shall be prevented. And the right to water or the use or flow of water in or from any natural stream or water course does not and shall not extend to the waste or unreasonable use or unreasonable method of use or unreasonable method of diversion of water. So basically, be careful how you treat it and what you put in it. Apart from not allowing excess chemicals and crack and then, that seems to include excess use by agribusiness. Section 4. No individual, partnership, or corporation claiming or possessing the printage of navigable water shall be permitted to exclude the right of void such water whenever it's required for any public purpose. So the public gets unimpeded access to beaches.
We'll now hear from the next caller.
Hey, Gonzalo here. So at the beginning of every meeting, we hear, you know, the acknowledgements, the tribal acknowledgements, and, you know, how they have endured. My people have endured systematic oppression. You know, it's funny how, you know, they don't address which system. Would that be the same system that still exists? And the fact that government, government has never worked for every single person, nor will it ever. So dream on with that one, Crystal. It's just another show, you know, there should be way... I wish all those people who received their proclamations did, but I know they didn't because they were just there for the purpose of getting an award and then they leave. Yeah, same old, same old. Getting the trust by giving people treats always worked. And unfortunately, you know, it's going to continue this way until more of our county citizens start to get involved and wake up to the reality of what is in fact happening. And what is in fact happening is that we are being moved into a system that is not for our benefit. We are being moved slowly, bit by bit, incrementally is how this system works, to get all the people on board. What they're going to do, they're going to give you distractions, they're going to entertain you, they're going to make you worry, they're going to keep you in fear. And that's how they will accomplish what it is they have set out for us. And what did they have set out for us? It is the United Nations Agenda for the 21st fucking century. Look it up. It's here. It's actually here. You're afraid of the Cheeto Bandito, but guess what?
We'll hear from the next caller.
It's true. I demand you see the spinning on each supervisor's attendance of meetings and events listed on every meeting agenda. Every city publicly lists the meetings and events attended at the public expense. Why can't the county be transparent with tax dollars? And Jim, how would you make it in Congress if you haven't even been able to stand for anything here? Beware of the trumpeteer train. I also need to expose the fact that the county continues to deny the release of public records. Record request number 24-3943, quote, "I request all communications from the year 2024 sent by Supervisor Nora Vargas using the keywords Allison, snow, lemon grove, spring valley, sleeping cabins, and tiny homes." Answer, third records have been withheld as they are protected under the deliberative process privilege. District 1 Chief of Staff Antoinette Velazquez is responsible for the claim of exemption, end quote. And record request number 24-3941, quote, "I request all communications from the year 2024" And record request number 24-3941, quote, "I request all communications from the year 2024 sent by Supervisor Nora Vargas using the keywords Justin Castro, Gambler, and Karma." Answer, certain records have been withheld as exempt as they are protected by attorney-client privilege. District one Chief of Staff Antonette Velasquez is responsible for the claim of exemption, end quote. Obviously, the county is covering for Nora. The question is why? She's costing us over $6 million to fund a special election for District one. Last Tuesday meeting, Tara allowed some idiot to yell out because I called out SD Dems. If someone doesn't like the fact that some local Democrats have done corrupt things, then I suggest they immediately work to reform the party. Because $10 million lost so far, Tara, through two special elections is outrageous. People need to go to prison for their crimes against the county. People can't smile, Monica, because they're wondering, when will the county course correct? Quit skipping out on Sandak meetings and start following the law. I ask, how soon is now? When will the people be represented instead of giving us lip service all the time?
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good morning. My name is John Bottor with CleanEarthForKids.org. We ask you to not renew the county's land lease with West Coast tomato growers when it comes up. My wife and I had to sell and move from our home because of their pesticides. We had the means to leave, but it breaks our heart knowing that our friends and neighbors are still there in Oceanside being poisoned. That is public land being exploited for profit, poisoning nearby residents and wildlife. This is a misuse of public lands and a betrayal of public trust. That land is parkland and should be there for the public. Since 2016, over 70% of the pesticides used by West Coast tomato growers have active ingredients banned in other countries because of the harm to human health and the environment. There are endangered wildlife being poisoned by these pesticides, along with many, many children's schools and preschools. Legal does not mean safe. The decisions you make today affect our children's health and future. Please protect children and the environment and do not renew the land lease to West Coast tomato growers when it comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the final caller this morning.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Becky Rapp, and I'm here this morning to bring to your attention a statement released by the Drug Enforcement Administration. Derek Maltz, the new interim administrator of the DEA, has brought attention to the damaging effects marijuana is having on our young people. Maltz recognizes that updated research has indicated that the high potency THC marijuana is causing increased health risks, particularly with the mental health of young people, increasing the likelihood of volatile and violent behaviors. He stated, I quote, "Obsessive pot smoking is associated with school shootings," and that politics have been placed over public safety. The DEA stated that the average percentage of THC, the psychoactive cannabinoid in marijuana known for giving users a, quote, "high feeling," has been steadily increasing and reached an all-time high, significantly increasing the mental health problems of millions of Americans. The DEA is concerned that their updated research is not getting the attention it deserves. I would suggest that the county Health and Human Services Agency be directed to provide a detailed scientific analysis of the health risks surrounding high potency THC that is available today in our county. This information should be publicly acknowledged as it's time to put people over profits, following the lead of the DEA and Director Maltz. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning. Again, all the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes and statements of proceedings for the session on January 7th, January 8th, and special meeting of January 14th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, second by Supervisor Montgomery Step. Please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll now proceed with the formation of the consent agenda. That's items 1 through 13 and SR 1. All items on the consent agenda are routine and will be acted upon with one motion. Individuals can comment on the consent agenda after the supervisors pull the items they would like for discussion and make any comments on those items. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion or have any comments on any of the items on the consent agenda? Supervisor Anderson?
Not at this time, thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery Step?
Don't need to pull anything. Happy to move the consent agenda, but I want to just make a quick comment on item number 12. I'm pleased to recommend Jacob Christie to the Spring Valley Community Planning Group. Jacob is a community member who has been attending the planning group for several years as an interested community member, and I'm certain that it will be a smooth transition for him to actually join the planning group. Excited to see his unique perspective and insight to the planning group, and I thank you for his service. Again, I move the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Desmond?
Nothing to pull, no comments, and I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much. I just have a comment on item number three, which is the single-source contract with Sharp Healthcare for hospital-based crisis stabilization services within Sharp Chula Vista Medical Center. I wanted to up this item as really important. I know the team has worked incredibly hard to make this happen, and I think it's an important step forward in our continuing work to ensure that everyone in our community has access to the behavioral healthcare that they need, and that we're continuing to try to flip the pyramid and make sure that we're able to help folks, you know, where they're at, and then get them connected with care in our community. And we do know that CSU is a much better place for people in a crisis than just taking them to an emergency room. I think this is a great partnership with Sharp. So I also really want to thank Sharp for their partnership in making this happen. And, you know, I think it's an example of what we can do when we get creative. We identify new facilities, and we're able to draw down our fair share of Medicaid funding to fund healthcare, critical healthcare services in our community. So that's what this is all about. So good work to everyone who made this happen and very happy to support that today. So with that, we will turn to public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 15 requests to speak on items on the consent agenda, seven in person, and eight requesting to speak by phone. Any individuals that requested to speak on items on the consent agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. I will be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. You will have two minutes to address the board. I'll ask you to please begin by stating your name for the audio record. Also, when speaking, please identify which item or items on the consent agenda you are speaking about. We'll begin with the speakers in favor, starting with Nancy Greengold, followed by Pam and Julie Porter. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good morning, honorable members of the board. My name is Dr. Nancy Greengold, and I am pleased to serve as the Chief Operating Officer of Sharp Chula Vista Medical Center. I'd like to take this opportunity to register Sharp's support for item three on the consent agenda and thank Luke Birdman and the Behavioral Health Services Team, as well as the Behavioral Health Advisory Board for getting us to this point in time. Sharp is intentional in how we grow and where we grow to ensure we invest in services that our communities need where they are needed. To address the dire need for acute behavioral health services, Sharp has recently pursued and received one-time state grant funding to support the design and development of a new emergency psychiatric assessment, treatment, and healing EMPATH unit at Sharp Chula Vista Medical Center. Like a crisis stabilization unit, the EMPATH is a tool for our emergency department to offer rapid assessment and treatment for people experiencing a psychiatric crisis. With the ongoing challenges related to overcrowding and wait times in emergency rooms across our region, the EMPATH unit will allow us to provide care to those who are experiencing behavioral health challenges in a dedicated and quiet space within our ER. As the largest provider of care and the largest medical provider in the San Diego region, Sharp is proud to partner with the county on this critical initiative. I'd like to acknowledge the Sharp team that's with me here today. Scott Evans, Senior Vice President and Market CEO of Sharp Healthcare Regional Hospitals. Michelle Al Rawaf, Chief Financial Officer. Joseph Smith, Director of Critical Care.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. I call the first three speakers, Pam and Julie Porter. You're welcome to come forward in any order. Please line up on the arrows.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Good to see you, board. It's been a while. I'm here to talk about item number one.
Can you please state your name?
Julie Porter.
Thank you.
And I'm with lived experience advisors today. It's about authorizing acceptance of funding for the transitional housing program, housing navigation and maintenance program, and transitional housing program plus housing supplement program and adopt resolutions authorizing application and acceptance of allocation awards. I do appreciate you hearing me today. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the remaining speaker in favor, Rachel Hayes. Called your name, please come forward. Thank you.
Pam, number two, no. Procurement of equipment should include maintenance and parts in the purchase price. Doesn't Hamilton Micro Labs stand by its products? Of concern is no competition as these county lab-preferred products are made only by Hamilton. Interesting, the document mentioned COVID. On page four, quote, "Public health lab tested over 500,000 COVID-19 samples," unquote. The PCR test was the single most-used test and is not a diagnostic tool. It was invented for the detailed study of DNA samples. The entire process was potentially fraudulent. The county spent, and I'll always say this because I remember Dr. Wooton saying it right there, the county spent $1 billion on COVID, and people still died. The new 52,000-square-foot county public health laboratory overseen by this governing body, can you imagine what is going to go on in that lab? The public must be alert to fear mongering and do their own research about any disease, contagion, and invasive or ingested medical treatment proclaimed by the government or this county as the cure-all. Number eight, yes. Protection of life and property is the number-one priority of the government. Preparedness is essential. The county can't do better next time, as declared by other elected government people in this state. In recent years, especially months, the frequency of the need for firefighting services has increased, potentially taxing our firefighters. Assuring these men and women are healthy, physically fit, and proficient to provide their invaluable service is essential to their success and well-being. They have chosen this profession to help the public, and the county must make sure they're prepared to protect us and do the job they signed up to do.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the speakers in opposition to items on the consent agenda, Alan C., allegedly Audra, and Mark. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Rachel Hayes, lived experience advisors. Good morning, board. It's been a long time. Missed you. I'm speaking about item one. Anything that has to do with housing is a go. I live in permanent supportive housing, and that's because I'm dual-diagnosed. I've had health issues, mental issues, and other issues. And if it wasn't for permanent supportive housing with wraparound services, it took me 10-plus years to get into working the system and Alpha Project and the Housing Commission, I'd still be homeless to this day. And that's not right. It shouldn't take that long. The county needs you guys' help. They need you guys to jump in and say, okay, let's do more permanent supportive housing, housing that everyone in San Diego can afford. Permanent supportive, my permanent supportive housing? It's not perfect. We just changed management. It's a joke right now. But you know what? It'll get better again because they have to get adjusted to us. You know, you have your fair share of problems. People bring in the streets with them when they get into housing. You have one year to adjust. You leave the streets behind. And if you don't, then you face the consequences, and you get evicted because that apartment will be filled. They never go empty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Alan C. I'm going to go to four to five first. This should be at least a five-year, doing every effort you can to get the money back to the people that were taxed. The one concern, especially property tax refunds, surely you can reach the grandchildren, the nephews, somebody that relates to that tax. And it says here, 2024, should be at least a five-year. Okay, and I'm going to jump down to one. The transitional housing, I invite you to go down to K&amp;3 down in Chula Vista. People live there like 80 years, single-level homes, right behind them is a seven-story unit of so-called affordable housing. The affordable units, after we fund it, it's still going to cost a guy $800 a month. You're not helping the drug tents. You're not helping at all. And speaking of that, I'm going to jump over to three, which talks about, why is one hospital group getting the only contract when it deals with crisis stabilization and all that stuff? It should be every hospital. Look back at history, Prop 47, who caused the drug tents? A.G. Harris wrote that fake bill and called Safe Neighborhood School Act to fool the voters. She caused all the drug tents. And now this is your source to fix it? Every city in the county voted yes and forced the law again. Get rid of these drug tents, you'll solve half these fires. Do something and do the right thing. And yes, Sharp, you should get that, but so should everybody else, Kaiser, every hospital. And don't stop calling it as they're mentally unstable when the majority of them is because there are years and years on drugs. And Monica, why did she shut down Golden Plaza? You had a perfect opportunity to fight, treat 550 beds, and yet you let that go. Why? I yield back.
Next speaker, please.
Mark, so, number one, it's a good idea, of course, to help people transition, especially out of foster care and such when they turn 18. Unfortunately, the system that's set up will give most of the money to, not to the kids in helping them. It'll, there'll be psychologists and counselors and every middleman you can possibly imagine. Two and three, single-source procurements are always a bad idea for obvious reasons. You can look it up. The web will give you a brief description of why, the things that go wrong with that. Authorized brand vehicles for the government, for the county here, they always have the best cars for themselves. Approval of conflict of interest, 11. This is a conflict of interest.
... mention our names like Sis Vokel, even Vladimir Putin and so on. They all have been young global leaders of the World Economic Forum. But what we are very proud of now is the young generation, like Prime Minister Trudeau, President of Argentina and so on, is that we penetrate the cabinets. So yesterday, I was at a reception for Prime Minister Trudeau, and I would know that half of this cabinet, or even more half of this cabinet, are actually young global leaders of the World Economic Forum.
So that's Klaus Schwab stating that he's penetrated governments for his World Economic Forum. Governor Newsom is a young global leader. He doesn't deny it. You can look it up. That is aiding and abetting against our country.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My person uses the name Audra. Started at 1:59, that's a little weird. Number two. So this is all based off of fraud. I would like to say it's really should be called the Public Death Department, not Health, because spending $1 billion on fraud is pretty ridiculous, especially when Jim himself admitted that we are still in an emergency for the money and that we still continue to use a fraudulent PCR test for the money. So we were selling, you guys, we're selling people out for the money. Where'd that billion dollars go? To kill people, basically? Because these shots are actually genocide shots. It's a bioweapon, and you guys are...
It's a bioweapon and you guys are complicit and culpable in the murder of the people who lost their lives and the people who have been maimed, even Jim, your arm, right? I mean, maybe we should look into that, but there is a new peer-reviewed study that finds irrefutable evidence for immediate market withdrawal of COVID-19 vaccines. And it's interesting that we're still using a PCR test when there's nothing to test it against because there is no isolation of any virus. That's coming down from the HHS, the Health Department. There is nothing for them to compare it to. So all of this is fraud, waste and abuse and you guys are engaged in the murder of people. So no money should be going to this fraudulent organization that is not doing what's best for the people. It's not saving lives. It's actually, and you guys were wanting people to get these or lose their job. It's very sad because of the things that you guys are engaged in and over 8,100 physicians have said this about the negative efficacy, excess mortality and DNA contamination because of these shots. Good for you guys.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Madison Rapp and I am speaking in support of consent item one. I am with you in supporting the county's vision of a just, sustainable and resilient future for all, especially those communities and populations in San Diego County that have been historically left behind. Providing funding to youth ages 18 to 25 who are leaving the foster care system is a very worthy mission. These youth are part of our county's future and deserve to have a start in adulthood that is not mired in homelessness or addiction. This age group actually has one of the highest rates of cannabis use with 43% of 19 to 30 year olds having reported cannabis use. This is an age when significant life decisions are made, including educational, relationships and career pursuits. There is mounting evidence that young people's use of cannabis is fueling depression and suicide in this population, according to experts who recently spoke during a session at the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry's annual meeting. Quote, "Expanded cannabis product offerings, increasing potency and an increase in state and local legislation laws are posing unprecedented exposure to young people during a critical period of brain development," end quote. The transitional housing program is great, but let's also be mindful of the realities of substance use in kids of this age group and find ways to include substance prevention, which in effect will be ameliorating depression and suicide for this already vulnerable group of kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Paul Bold, 11. The World Trade Center, the board letter says, "The Board of Supervisors serves the code reviewing body for any local agency other than cities with jurisdiction wholly within the county." The WGCA org map shows that in fact this World Trade Center of San Diego is in fact an international organization. The conflict of interest code should be the U.S. Constitution enforceable by a stiff sentence, how about life or exiled or remote island? We should be encouraging our trade, not world trade. The Fed should control world trade. Three, why do we need the single-source contract for behavioral health crisis stabilization units? Only six units, all in South County. There's not a very central location and surely we can do better, like one or two per Sharp Hospital. The equity statement says that there are an average of 282 emergency department visits per week and the South Bay is only the third largest region in overdose deaths in the county. To me, this suggests the need for CSUs all over the county. Six bits in Chula Vista as a start, but given the numbers won't do much. Is there an overall plan or do we pick bit by bit, more or less at random? Please prove the need for these in just one way. Expanded use of the simplified procurement process is counterproductive. You know, if you need emergency vehicles, you don't want to hamstring yourself into just a few brands.
We'll hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I am Ryan Tribuco calling this morning in on behalf of Imperial Beach Mayor Paloma Gary to support item number three on the consent agenda. This item will grant, of course, a new NPATH unit within the Sharp Chula Vista Medical Center. NPATH offers care for those experiencing a psychiatric crisis through crisis stabilization services. Sharp Chula Vista Medical Center is the emergency center and hospital of choice and service for many Imperial Beach residents. So this new service will provide a positive impact to our community and serve our residents in need. Again, on behalf of Mayor Paloma Gary, she is in support of item number three to help facilitate impactful connections to behavioral health crisis care. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Justin here. How you guys doing? I don't support giving a company, here's a question. Kyfer makes money, right? Like they make an ungodly amount of money. They could build their own building if they want, but we're going to go ahead and build it for them for what reason? I mean, because of us doing it, it's going to cost 10 times as much money, a lot of money gets washed away into people's hands. I guess that's the point. As for these housing projects, I'm kind of curious about the contract, meaning how long are these low-income housing going to be able to stay in these locations? What I'm hearing from all over the place is the fact that after the contract is over, after the bond is over, after the government funded thing is over and we have to pay for the remaining part of the building, that they then have full control over that building and then they look at ways of getting out those low-income housing. They kick them out. Hell, they don't even ask them for money for the last year so that when that time comes, they can say, hey, you owe us this much money. If you don't have it, you are out. This happens all over the place, but we don't want to talk about that because, you know, we need to wash a little bit more money into your guys' hands, right? We all understand the fact that you guys support election fraud here completely and utterly. You don't want anyone to check IDs, even though at all times that we have names posted outside the front of the building so that people could know who they could vote for. We checked it out to say, hey, this person voted so that if you wanted to go ahead and pretend you were someone else, you can't. And I bet you this is all over the fucking place. But you know, we don't care about election security here in San Diego. Hell, we'll even block anyone trying to look at.
We'll now hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Supervisors. Sean Brady with lived experience advisors here in support of agenda item number one. I wanted to say thank you for continuing to take the lead on providing housing and services for our unsheltered community. This is such a challenging time and as we look forward, we all know that we have got to be more effective with our dollars. So we wanted to identify an area where there needs to be some better coordination. We have found that in permanent supportive housing units, there seems to be, in many cases, a lack of coordination of services. Many of these services are county-paid for services, but there's no overriding entity making sure that they're there and that they are coordinated with other service providers and that they are happening on site. This has led to many challenges in our permanent supportive housing retention. One example that we see as consistent policy is the fact that a eviction notice will go out before a case manager or another entity that is there to provide services can intervene on behalf of a client. This type of activity further traumatizes the client and puts them in jeopardy of their housing. How is it that we get to a position where somebody might be threatened with eviction before a case manager engages? This is clearly a lack of coordination and we encourage you to look into this. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Hi, I can follow. So I just wanted to point out how every single item on this consent calendar is just a product of the failed system and the fact that, you know, we have items regarding mental health. I mean, almost every meeting, it seems. It's kind of like at this point, people have to recognize that we do live in a system where people are not made to live this way. We are not made to, people cannot function. People are having a hard time and they still continue to do the same thing over again, which is, you know, every four years, they're voting and they're believing in the same system that continues to fail them. So as far as that, I just wanted to point that out and also say how, damn, the fluoride is in fact working. And if people have issues with the way our county is being run and our local government is being run, please do join in, speak up, call in. You don't have to show up, but at least say something instead of being like a little, you know, saying your comments behind the keyboard. Everybody's brave behind the keyboard, but show the fuck up. If you've got issues with some of the speakers or how our county is being run, show up. Now's the time because it's going to get worse. And as I said before, and I didn't get to finish, it's not the orange cheeto bandito to fear, it's what is bigger than that. And it's coming. It's actually already been established. So pay attention, show up or shut the fuck up. Sorry, I had to say that.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Ann Riddle. I called in to lend my voice of support for consent item one. I worked in foster care when I first got out of college and made some observations that I'd like to share with you. You are definitely on the right path, as is the state, in continuing funding beyond the age of 18 for our foster care youth. Depending on the year, some 50% of 18-year-olds are still in high school and for them to age out of the system while they haven't even finished their high school education is sort of unconscionable. Well, one of the observations I made for, made about this age group is, now that we're concentrating on them, is that they don't have a caseworker that continues with them. And the gentleman I mentioned about the lack of coordination between services is dead on. That's an observation I made as well, to make sure that we serve this group well. And for those of us who are health advocates on behalf of young adults, and I see that you're mentioning in your overview, the county's goal for prevention, we really need to look carefully at the role that drug use is playing in this population of 18 to 25, particularly marijuana. And each day here in my office, I receive information from the Journal of Psychiatry and the Journal of Pediatrics, who have been covering this issue of 18 to 25-year-olds and their daily use of marijuana and the subsequent severe mental health issues that follow. I know that you're releasing some sort of report on Thursday regarding extending marijuana businesses in the unincorporated area, an area it's not the least bit interested in. But let's ask ourselves, is that the smart thing to do when we're receiving this sort of research information daily on behalf of our young adults, a young adult population that we want to put money into to?
Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that concludes public comment on the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion by Supervisor Montgomery Stupp and a second by Supervisor Desmond to approve the consent agenda. Please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to our discussion items. We're going to take the items in the following order. We'll hear items 14 and 15. Then we go to item 18 because we have a presentation from our public safety team. Then we'll resume in order with items 16 and 17 taken together and then items 19, 20 and 21. Item 18 will help frame the county's emergency preparedness and is good background for items 16 and 17. So again, to repeat, we'll hear items 14 and 15, then go to item 18, then we'll resume with items 16 and 17 taken together, then items 19, 20 and 21. So we will begin with item 14, selection of chair, vice chair and chair pro tem of the 2025 Board of Supervisors. I would like to hand it over to the clerk of the board, Andrew Potter, to explain this process.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. The charter and the board's rules of procedure require that the board select a chair, vice chair and chair pro tem at their first meeting in January or within 30 days thereafter. The same 30-day timeframe exists when there is a vacancy. Since the vacancy of the chair position occurred on January 6, 2025, that gives the board until February 5, 2025 to make a selection. The board's rules of procedure, rule five, dictates the process for selection of the board's officers as well as how vacancies are handled. It specifies that during the absence of the chair, the vice chair shall preside. The same occurs for the chair pro tem in the absence of the chair and vice chair. Until the board votes to select new officers, the existing officers would remain with Vice Chair Lawson Reimer serving as chair and Chair Pro Tem Anderson serving as vice chair. The board may solicit nominations for the chair or a slate of chair, vice chair and chair pro tem. Any nominations must have a second and if the person nominated declines a position, the nomination will be withdrawn. Upon successful election of a chair, the balance of the meeting or nomination for vice chair, if no slate of officers was elected, will be conducted by the incoming chair. If the board took action today and it resulted in a tie vote, as it did at the last meeting, under the board's rules, the matter would return to the board at the next meeting until a successor is selected. It would be appropriate at this time to consider nomination for chair or a slate that includes chair, vice chair and chair pro tem.
Thank you very much. I'll just begin, we'll begin with comments from our board members and then we'll go to the public comment. I'll begin with a nomination. I would like to nominate myself for chair and my colleague Supervisor Montgomery Stupp for vice chair.
I'll second.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or thoughts from my fellow board members before we go to public comment?
I have a, and I'm going to be offering a substitute motion later, but so does this keep coming back every time or do we have an opportunity to delay it till after the election? Could that be a motion?
That's a great question. Thank you. I mean, that, right, could we, would, could someone make a motion to continue this till July?
Under the board's rules of procedure, when there is a tie vote, the item automatically comes back to the board at the next meeting unless the board takes action to set a date certain for that to come back. I'll turn it over to County Council if she's got some additional comments on that.
So as the charter indicates, there is a requirement to have it within the 30 days, within the first 30 days of the new, of the first meeting of the year, which is by February 5. The board rules of procedure do allow for holdovers in the absence of that. So therefore, if the board wanted to make a motion to a date certain, they could do so based on the charter provisions that do indicate a preference for sooner than later, so to speak. We would suggest that you, if you were to board or to do that, to select a date certain, not necessarily wait for potentially six months, but pick a periodic timeframe, whether that is in two months, in eight weeks, a month, whatever that is, so that it revisits the question and makes an effort in the meantime.
So.
Supervisor Montgomery Stupp?
Just really quick, if, I mean, we could count out 90 days and we do have a primary and a general, so I would say I wouldn't want to put in stone that we'd wait until July, just, and then it sounds like that would be somewhat consistent with what County Council is saying about having a certain timeframe, but I think monthly is not going to, I don't think that that's, I would support that. If we're going to do a time, we should go out farther than a month.
So just to summarize what I'm hearing you say is if we were going to do this, do kind of 90 days out because then by then there at least have been a primary, so we'll have some more information.
I think so. I haven't done the math in my head, but I'm thinking that may be accurate.
Can we turn to the clerk of the board, Andrew?
Sure. Within 90 days, the next meeting would be April 22, 2025. That'll be 84 days from today. That's about right. So I'll make a substitute motion and you may have to correct my language on this, but the.
So I'll make a substitute motion, and you may have to correct my language on this, but that we delay this vote until... for 90 days.
April 22? We can leave that motion open and see if there's a second, unless someone has it, and we could then vote, or we could go to public comment, so.
Okay.
Why don't we go to public comment, and then we...
Happy second.
Okay. So you've got a second for that. Let's hear public comment, and then we can do the vote.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay, Clerk Andrew, could you please turn to public comment?
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 13 requests to speak on this item, five in person, eight requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received one neutral e-comment. Any individuals that requested to speak on Item 14 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speaker, starting with the individual in favor, followed by those in opposition. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. I will be calling you in groups of three, so I'll ask you to please listen for your name. You'll have two minutes to address the board, and we'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward Pam, followed by the speakers in opposition, starting with Alan C. and allegedly Audra. If I've called your name, please come forward. You're welcome to come forward in any order, then.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, for allowing two minutes. Chair Lawson Reimer, if you can look up. Yeah, because phenomenal, even though the complete off-topic is great. Pretend like we got to mention we're talking, because right of speech is so important.
And please...
And going forward, what we're talking about...
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting. I apologize. Alan C. Yeah, right now, it's a lock. Two GOP, two Democrat. Chair Lawson Reimer, you believe in right of democracy. Your alternate should remain a GOP. You're a Democrat. To represent all the people, yes, we should have one GOP, one Democrat, to make it more open, more diverse, so everybody gets represented as much as possible. Speaking of which, one area is not being represented right now, my area, District 1. So no, you should not vote in each area anybody until the other seat is filled by my representative. But on the other hand of the coin, I love it that I'm not being represented. Why? Because now we're at impasse, not only for this, but for... Now you're not going to hand out grants like candy. You're going to fight for your people, for the people that you're supposed to represent, not the purple shirts, but everybody, to fight, to get whatever you get, not just a party, but for the people. And that's so important. So yes, when you push this forward, even whatever... Let's say we have three GOP, or whichever way, even then, the vice should be one party and the Chair should be the other party. Again, me being a conservative, I want both sides to represent the people. Keep that in mind, when whoever wins the election, that the Chair and Vice Chair do what's right in your heart to represent the people and not the purple shirts. The purple shirts are less than 1%. Will you back what you swore in old, when you first looked at it to run for politics, that in your heart back then, when in your youth, you said, "I'm going to do something for the country. I'm going to do something to help my neighbor." Will you do that? I yield back. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Number 14. I don't know how you approve or whatever, but anyway, what a mess. Here we are still, courtesy of Nora Vargas, Tara, and Monica. Tara and Monica support the Super Sanctuary County along with Nora. Therefore, it is feasible Tara and Nor Monica may not be available to carry out their duties based on a letter dated 12/23/2024. You probably all have seen this. It was addressed to Nora Vargas. Page 4, quote, "Because your jurisdiction, sanctuary laws, or policies usually require multiple officials to coordinate their activities, all such officials could be criminally liable under multiple federal criminal conspiracy statutes," unquote. And interesting on page 5, kind of my favorite, quote, "Your jurisdiction, sanctuary policies could expose you and the other individual officials and employees involved to potential personal financial liability to private plaintiffs," unquote. Signed, James Rogers, Senior Counsel, America First Legal Foundation. This letter is public record. Tara and Monica are not suitable to serve, let alone lead in a Chair capacities. They both prioritize convicted, violent, criminal, illegal foreigners above the safety of American citizens and legal residents in this county. On a different note, it could be said the Chair position is cursed, as the last two individuals resigned in disgrace. Be fun to see what happens.
As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person, Michael Brando and Mark.
My person uses the name Audra. That is so true, Pam. It's so true. So I wouldn't want to be Chair unless you want to be gone, because you'll be the maker of your own demise. It's interesting, because Tara's like, pretty exciting, because you could be Chair right now for quite a while, huh? I bet that's... But that's exciting. Is that why you got a new hairdo? Who knows? But I think that you should do something like going back and forth from Democrat to Republican, like every year, so then everybody gets represented. I don't think you guys are really, you know, in the right frame of mind to be able to decide who should be Chair, because you guys make really nefarious decisions for the people. So I don't know, maybe like one of us could... What if I was Chair? How cool would that be? I have my own gavel, and I could just, you know, sit right in front of you guys. I bet all of you would love that. Every single one of you would. It would be... It would make it fun. I mean, right? No? No. I mean, it's kind of a joke anyway, what happens here, so why not make a joke about it? And I still have 52 seconds to waste of your time, because you guys like to waste our time, and you like to waste our money, and you like to do some pretty crazy things. And I still can't believe that nobody's brought forward something refuting the sanctuary status. It's weird. Super weird, Jim. Again, I told you months ago, it's what you should do, and you're like, "Mm, it's not going to be impactful enough. There's no point in doing it." You still feel the same way? You do. No, you don't. So are you going to bring forward an item? I mean, because I don't know. It's like you want to be Chair, but if you can't even do something like that to make sure that the people are protected, because ICE is going to come, and he could potentially round you all up. They're already here? Oh, yeah, exactly. And they're going to be coming after you guys. Good on you, and you'll get a jail cell, right?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Michael, I suggest all of you step down and go home. Most people aren't even listening to you. And the more manufactured events and manufactured false narratives, which you have promoted the last four to five years, the more people are waking up, the more people are finding out who you are, and they're disregarding you. It's like someone in a narcissistically abusive relationship. Once the person turns away from that negative energy, that heart-destructive energy, the hot potato goes back to cinder. The narcissist collapses. The Board of Supervisors collapses. Tara Lawson Reimer in the cursed Chair collapses, just like Nora Vargas, just like Nathan Fletcher. All of you have demonstrated complete hostility to people who don't share your false narratives. I've seen it today. I saw Joel Anderson, and it's on video, sneering at a speaker, Pam. When truth called in, I saw Jim Desmond doing his version of a sneer when truth called him out. You have an opportunity to course correct and stop the charades. It doesn't matter whether you choose to or choose not to. You're going to make your own bed, just like each one of us do, and we each have choice to create a wholesome life, a wholesome community, based on beauty, truth, and goodness. And I'm going to end with my favorite question. How good can it get? How good can it get?
Next speaker, please.
Mark, so you guys are just going to go around in a circle for a while. I hope you give it a 90-day delay, because otherwise, it's just a circus that'll produce nothing, which is probably good, because pretty much everything the Board passes here is against the people, and they don't even know about. Most people don't know this Board exists. Some people have heard of this City Council. Anyway, none of you are actually qualified. Of course, Jim, I would like to see of the choices we have here, I would like him to Chair. But I'm not Democrat or Republican, and as I stated before, but playing the Klaus Schwab video where he literally says that he's penetrated governments, including half of Canada, with Trudeau, and Macron as a young global leader. Our Governor Newsom is a young global leader, and none of the people here... This has been pointed out by multiple people at these meetings many times, and none of you have done your oath, obeyed your oath to the Constitution and called it out. So no one's really qualified, but if people want to know what's going on, you should see a video. The title is something like William Cooper, Behold the Pale Horse, Chapter 13. That'll tell you why we're being controlled by the UN, by the UN Treaty of 1945, which is totally unconstitutional, should have never been, should be abolished. You should also see Rosa Corey. For those of you out there, the Democrats here are constantly pushing very, very far-left agendas for the UN. If you see Rosa Corey, Part 1, on YouTube, K-O-I-R-E is Corey. She's an expert court witness, and she'll give you the lowdown on that.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will begin with our first caller.
Hold on. Maybe you still can't agree. Maybe you should just give yourselves 20 minutes, and then if you can't agree, draws draws before this goes too far. Last year, I was the first to welcome Monica to the Board. I advised her to listen to both sides' messages. Cutting off speakers' last sentences, calling people off topic when they are not pushing agenda items to the next day, when many speakers can't be there, they simply make... All these things make them angrier. The ones I did push to ensure, and half-baked ideas in the county's ordinances, as if they mean so much in this whole big scheme of things, it destroys the... A great time to listen to the people, put ideas from both sides, hopefully without the name-calling, the meanness, false narratives in the media, often promoted by the people who are supposed to lead instead of hiding behind a facade, the lack of thinking that bad guys are all on one side, and the county is always right. It's a great opportunity to correct these failures of the past. The good news is that you're already doing it bit by bit. But listening consistently to both sides is a great start. I'd say that Jim is the best at this. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller. Next caller is Justin Castro. Your device might be muted. And we'll come back to that caller.
It's truth again. Why half-baked Tara can't be Chair or in any position of public office?
Most people don't even know too much what the Supervisors do. A lot of times, politics is a lot of theater, right? And people put a name on a bill, and then it gets a lot of attention. We just stick here and have theater all day. People care we do theater, like, all day long. My commitment is civil law. We're basically, you have a gun to our head. Take this deal, or we're going to take your money and sue you. I don't have to say. I feel like we have a gun to our head.
And as I said earlier, at the January 14 meeting, some uncivil idiot was yelling out live spoken, and you, Tara, did nothing about it. That failure serves as another evidence of arbitrary enforcement of the Board rules. And from an October 17 Voice to San Diego article, quote, "Lawson Reimer said, 'Being Chair will significantly help my ability to have my hands in more lanes,'" end quote. And despite later being a clot-shot pusher, Tara wrote in 2015, quote, "The profit returned to Pfizer will be enormous, while the cost to the rest of us in human lives is unconscionable," end quote. Tara's exposed herself as a flip-flopper, when in 2021, she then claimed everyone, even her own daughter, should be subjected to unproven experimental medical decisions and sacrificed for the so-called greater good. I'll never forget those crocodile tears. Tara's also failed to respond to the neglect of the networked Berkeley horses on Artesian Road, which different officers since 2023 have said things like, quote, "Dr. Perry said that some of the horses, particularly the older ones, have been losing weight at an increased rate. There are 40 to 50 horses on the property. There is no shelter from the elements for the 30 horses that are out in pasture, and an officer believes this has turned into a hoarding situation," end quote. Another reason Tara can't be Chair, she can't even protect horses, let alone humans. Yet she seems to believe that she can introduce a policy to protect people from sharks. Sharks! Remember that text, Tara? It's now publicly available for everybody to laugh at. That's what you guys are, a joke. None of you are fit to lead. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Becky Rapp, and I appreciate this opportunity to comment regarding a new Chair. And I appreciate Supervisor Desmond's bold move for nominating himself at the previous meeting. We need someone who can represent the unincorporated area that has been grossly overlooked and neglected. This is an opportunity for a fresh start and an opportunity to work with the public, showing respect and dignity. This Board must have a representative who recognizes the importance of public health, public safety, and the public will of the people. The public appreciates that Supervisor Desmond respects the fact that the public deserves a voice. We need a Chair who will value the voice of the people, allowing them to speak and be heard. Please nominate Supervisor Jim Desmond. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Hi, Consolo. Yeah, why don't we do what Paul suggests and draw straws? But anyways, yes, a big fat ditto to everything that Tru just said. None of you, not one of you, are fit to lead, or be leaders. And with that being said, humanity has gotten to this point because everybody is looking for representation. Nobody feels fit to represent themselves, because they've been fed a big fat load of lies their entire lives, that we need government, we need help, we need assistance. No, we don't. We need each other. We need to all recognize that everything that we are doing within this system is only continuing to oppress every single one of us. And yeah, I'm going to have to say a few things regarding the word leader. Leaders don't capitulate. Real leaders are those still resisting. Great leaders don't set out to be leaders, they set out to make a difference. It's never about the goal, always about the goal. My favorite is, people who need leaders aren't fit to choose them. Amen. True leaders don't create followers, they create more leaders. Amen. Yeah, that's right. Leaders think and talk about the solution. Followers think and talk about the problem. Well, government's a big fat problem. Let's see, what other quotes are on leader? Oh, this is my favorite. The revolution won't be coming from a leader, the revolution will come.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Kevin Stevenson. So just to remind everyone, locally, here in San Diego County, we got a 3 to 2 Democratic majority on the San Diego County Board of Supervisors. And in terms of the popular vote, Kamala Harris beat Donald Trump within San Diego County by about 15, 16 points, if I remember correctly. So with bearing that information in mind, I would like to ask the following question. Why in the hell would we ever entertain... Why in the hell would we ever entertain the possibility of Jim Desmond being the Chair of the Board of Supervisors? Why should we reward this clown who has gone, ever since a year or two ago, on a massive media tour, spewing right-wing horse crap on Fox News and Newsmax about, oh, the Democrats in California are ruining everything, oh, socialists are taking over, this is why we need Donald Trump? Why should we reward the guy who has gone on Twitter and tagged the likes of Elon Musk and Tom Homan with such a high position in our local government? Why would we reward him with a run for Congress against Mike Levin? I say no. I will not allow for any scenario where Jim Desmond becomes chair, and I need Democrats, Tara, Monica, you need to fight like hell to prevent Jim Desmond and Joel Anderson from being able to control this body. You need to fight for your goddamn-
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Oh my God, that was funny. Justin here. How you guys doing? I do appreciate the fact that you guys are acting like your political parties and all that stuff. Getting out of, getting into this, like, I've never been a Republican, I'm not a Democrat, I don't care on either one of those parties because I believe, if you sign up for those parties and you're a politician and you haven't made anything for yourself, you're just looking for the lobbyists. And when you guys are trying to figure out which person to choose, why don't you guys discuss them all for yourselves? Who all shares a common lobbyist? And then go with that person that has the most common lobbyists? Because that's really what we're gonna be getting. I mean, if we wait until the election, we're just gonna wait for the lobbyist that is in that area. That is, that person who has a bunch of ballots to manufacture and we'll go ahead and choose our next board member. So Kevin, you do recognize the fact that there were signs posted outside of each polling location that said the list of the people and when they voted, there was a check mark, right? And the fact that when, if we don't ask for ID, anyone could have looked at that list, towed the name off that list, go into that polling site and request a ballot and vote for them. You do recognize that, right? But you wanna pretend that that does not happen. Are you going to pretend that that does not happen if your side loses? Would you pretend that all of a sudden that that is the concern? Because I don't give a shit about the Democrat or Republican, I don't give a shit about that. All I care about is restoring our rights, our votes, so that we could get rid of these bad ass-
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any comments to make on the item on the floor? We, just a reminder, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Anderson, to revisit this item, to continue this item to April 22nd. Okay? If there's no further comments, we'll take a vote on that item.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we will now move on to item number 15, and this is Discussion Item 15, Presentation on the Impact of Potential Tariffs. I'd like to hand it over to Steve and Nikia for a presentation. Sorry. Okay. Give everyone a minute to set it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the board. On December 10th, the board requested that staff provide a presentation on the possible impacts to our region from potential tariffs imposed by the federal government. This topic is quite fluid and ever-changing as the new administration considers various actions. We're fortunate to have with us today Dr. Nikia Clark, Chief Strategy Officer of the San Diego Regional Economic Development Corporation. The Regional EDC has been a valuable partner in fostering growth and economic prosperity in our region, and Nikia's expertise and insights on this complex topic are welcomed and appreciated. Nikia, thank you for sharing your time and knowledge with us today. To kick off this discussion this morning, our Office of Economic Development and Government Affairs will start the presentation with an overview of tariffs, and I'll turn it over to Matthew now. Thank you, Matthew.
Yes, thank you, Ebony. Good morning, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the board. I am Matthew Parr, Director of the Office of Economic Development and Government Affairs, and with me today is Dr. Nikia Clark, Senior Strategy Officer with the San Diego Regional EDC. We are here today to provide an overview of tariffs and the potential impact of proposed tariffs on the San Diego regional economy. I will provide a brief overview of what tariffs are and how they can be used, and then I will turn it over to Dr. Clark to discuss the potential impacts to our region. To begin, a tariff is a tax assessed on the import of a foreign good. This tax is paid to the US government and collected by US Customs and Border Protection. The tariff is paid for by the importer of the foreign good, and the cost of this tax is either absorbed by the importer or passed on to the consumer. Under the United States Constitution, Congress has authority over foreign commerce, but has delegated authority to the executive branch to modify tariffs under certain conditions. The purpose of tariffs can be divided into either economic or political purposes. Economically, there are three main ways that tariffs are utilized. First, to protect US industries from foreign competition. For example, agricultural goods tend to have more tariffs than industrial goods to protect US agriculture markets. Second, to raise federal revenue. This was used historically by the federal government before income taxes and has decreased over time. And third, to gain leverage in economic negotiations with other nations. Tariffs can also be used for political purposes. For example, tariffs can be used for national security purposes, including to influence other nations in a similar manner to sanctions and to protect against unsafe imports. When implementing new tariffs, the president or Congress must decide on what is the ultimate intended outcome of the tariff, protection, revenue, or negotiation. The utilization of tariffs can have both positive and negative effects. The positive effects include protecting existing domestic industries and markets, a potential to increase domestic production and/or innovation, and to increase federal revenue. The negative impacts, effects of tariffs could include the potential for price increases to consumers. If the tariff is too high, it may reduce overall trade or incur retaliatory efforts from other nations. And it may impact the larger goods market, including inflation and the overall economy. Now, I will turn it over to Dr. Nikia Clark to share the potential impact of proposed tariffs on the San Diego regional economy.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Matthew. And good morning, everyone. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the board. I'm grateful for the opportunity to spend a little time speaking with you today about these important issues. As you know, for 60 years, we at EDC have been in the jobs business, making sure that companies in the region have the tools and the talent that they need to continue to grow and thrive and create jobs for San Diegans. We also operate the Regional World Trade Center on behalf of the port, the airport, and the city of San Diego. And under that brand, we do a lot of our global competitiveness and trade and investment work. So, pulling together the region around a trade and investment strategy, helping small and medium-sized businesses access international markets, attracting foreign direct investment into our region, and then, of course, running trade missions and doing other activities that help position the San Diego region as a hub of innovation and job creation. So if we go to the next slide, please. When we think, under sort of the, using that global competitiveness hat as a representative of the World Trade Center, when we think about the region, one of its unique value propositions is the fact that we sit on the border with Mexico, with a highly integrated supply chain network, that we face the Pacific. And so we tend to think of the region, when we go out into the world and into the markets that matter most, we tend to think of the region as a binational region of 7 million people bisected by an international border. And a lot of the economic development work that so many of us are engaged on has to do with helping that border work more efficiently for firms and for communities, so that this region remains competitive and creates jobs. We're about a $262 billion regional economy, a very diverse place, a number of ports of international entry, north of the border in San Diego, about, as you all know, 3.5 million people, about 1.5 million jobs. 98% of our firms are small businesses, and they employ about 60% of San Diegans. And that's really important to this conversation. That's about double the national average in terms of employment. So when small businesses suffer, the region as a whole does. If we go to the next slide, please. In a few minutes, I'm gonna try to do two things. I know the subject of this discussion is really about tariff impacts, and I know we all know that a lot is still uncertain, and, and much will be revealed over the next months and years. What I would like to do is spend a little time talking about the growth drivers in the economy, why tariffs and trade matter for San Diego, and how we think about those things here. And then, too, talk a little bit about what we know so far and what that means for our region. So we talk about the regional economy in terms of sort of the regional traded clusters and what that means, or the clusters that create goods and services, that bring additional resources into the region. We know we're the largest concentration in military assets in the world. That brings about between $55 and $60 billion in contracts into this region every year. Huge tourism economy, bringing around 30 million annual visitors, and my friends at the Tourism Authority will always remind me that tourism is our biggest export. It's a service export. And then finally, where we spend a lot of time, the innovation cluster. So, we pay a lot of attention to these clusters around life sciences, aerospace and defense, clean technology, for a few different reasons. One, the job multiplier effect is the highest, so for every job we create in the innovation-based cluster, at any level of education, that creates another 2.2 elsewhere in the regional economy. And then, two, these are jobs and firms that can be anywhere. They compete globally, and when they can compete globally from San Diego, that has a huge impact on job creation metrics here in the region. So if we go to the next slide, most, it's important to note that most of our trade has to do with those innovation-based clusters. So we are a service-based economy, but the goods that we do create and trade all around the world are really linked to our most competitive industries, the life sciences, strategic technologies, aerospace and defense. And that's created some really good economic impacts for San Diego over the decades. If you look at what we export and import this slide, on the left-hand side, you see the top 10 export goods that San Diego firms export from this region. On the right, you see the top 10 import goods. The scales are different. We export less than we import. We export about $33 billion in goods every year. We import about $63 billion in goods. But there are a couple of things that are important about trade in goods in San Diego, in the San Diego region, that are unusual or unique. Chief among them is, when you look at the orange boxes, you'll see that four of the top 10 things that we import, we also export. And that really points to the integrated nature of supply chains in this region. And that's, that's really important to the conversation around tariffs. And, and finally, just the, the integrated supply chain that we have here in this binational region are really important to the key sort of innovation-based drivers that create so many jobs in the San Diego region. So we go on to the next slide. A couple other just quick context-setting thoughts around trade that will lead into how we think about tariffs. One that I think is really important in this current moment is that all trade is not the same. When we think about our trade, quote-unquote, trade relationship with Mexico, what we're really talking about is a co-production network. And I know that you all know that better than anyone, that 60% of US-Mexico trade is in intermediate goods, we're creating things together. So sometimes, something will cross the border six, seven, eight times before it finally reaches its end consumer, and that's because of the integrated nature of the supply chains here in the region. About 40% of US imports from Mexico is US content, so that means American labor represents about 40% of everything we import from Mexico. That's how integrated the supply chains are. So when we talk about sort of taxing or tariffs on goods from Mexico, we're, we're talking about something different than taxing or putting tariffs on goods from China. The American-made content in what we import from China is only about 4% by comparison. Second, whenever we think about tariffs, we also have to think about the second-order impact of those things on market access for US firms. About 98% of US exporters are small businesses, and about 2/3 of the region's customers and the region's purchasing power is outside of the United States. So as we kind of sit in this era in this country over the last decade or more of a more protectionist trade policy agenda, it's important to remember that when we talk about raising barriers, the, those disproportionately impact small and medium-sized businesses, which make up the bulk of San Diego jobs and the bulk of the San Diego economy. And then finally, I know many of us have been very focused on the Otaí Mesa Two, the Otaí Two Port of Entry, big infrastructure priority for the region. And the point I want to make here is that just Otaí Mesa is not responsible just for a lot of competitiveness in the binational region here at home, but also has big impacts for the competitiveness of industries across this country. So when you think about medical device imports, you know, we have the largest medical device cluster in the world across San Diego and Tijuana, a tremendous amount of capacity, and 52% of all US medical device imports used in hospitals in Boston and everywhere across the country come through the Otaí Mesa port. Similarly, with semiconductors, almost 70% of US imports cross our border here. So in these areas that are really crucial and strategically important for the United States, the, the trade and co-production networks that we have here are really vital to, to US competitiveness in that regard. And if we go to the next slide. So what does all that mean in the moment we find ourselves now? Obviously, we have been here before. We remember the level of uncertainty and consistent change from the first Trump administration. So, I'm, I'm not gonna read all of this out, but what we know so far, what we know for sure is that trade risk and uncertainty will continue to rise. One point I would make is that while the toolkit is different, the overall goals of US trade policy, there's also some continuity here. We have not had a pro, what would, what would be considered a pro-trade or pro-globalization administration in DC for quite some time. The goal, the tools that, say, the Biden administration used were more an industrial policy framework with the infrastructure bill, with the IRA and the CHIPS and SCIENCE bill that really was focused on reshoring and nearshoring American manufacturing competitive, American manufacturing capability, and increasing American competitiveness in key industries, and doing that through sort of a lens on middle-skilled jobs and manufacturing jobs, both for competitiveness reasons, for US competitiveness, and also to contain China. The goals of the moment we find ourselves in with, under the Trump administration are not that different. So I point that out because there's a lot of, there's obviously a lot of uncertainty. Tariffs are not necessarily about trade, they're about a lot of different political objectives. But overall, the goal, the, the goals that the United States has had around building stronger and more secure and more resilient supply chains in the United States remain relatively, there's some continuity there. I think for most large multinationals, this has been more or less priced in. Supply chains do not look the same as they did eight years ago. However, to my point about small businesses, when the rules change really rapidly and when barriers go up, it's the companies that can't afford to have a factory and a supply chain on every continent catering to that regional market that suffer. And that's, I think, something that's very important for San Diego and very important for this country as we think about trade and tariffs. And then finally, in terms of what to watch over the next weeks and months, there's been a lot of discussion, both in Mexico and the US, around Section 321. This is a part of the US Tariff Code that really focuses on, on importers being able to sort of warehouse goods and then release them, warehouse them under bonding and then release them into, into the domestic market. Because of the US MCA, a lot of importers have, and a lot of companies have established supply chains that do this in Mexico, right? That distribute from Mexico under the IMAX program. There's been a lot of movement in Mexico and the US around changes to the IMAX program to remove, to remove textiles in particular from that. And that's, again, consistent with the previous administration- And that's, again, consistent with the previous administration's goal to start to contain China and Chinese, what they call sort of Chinese access to the US market through Mexico. So I think a lot of these conversations about 321, you can really look at as Mexico responding to US concerns to avoid broader action on broad-based tariffs that impact manufacturers. It's trading warehousing jobs for manufacturing jobs. I think it's really important also to think about exceptions. If there's a 25% blanket tariff on Mexican imports, but that exempts the IMAX program, for example, that would largely shield US manufacturers in the country. So the details will matter a lot as they continue to be revealed. We know that the USMCA renegotiation is happening now, and a lot of, for the US-Mexico discussion in particular, a lot of what you read in the media is taking strong negotiating positions leading up to that renegotiation. I imagine we will see tightening rules of origin and also potentially some new scrutiny of firm ownership. And then finally, for this region, for the country as a whole, the evolving relationship with China, both on the trade deficit issue, but probably more important on the strategic technology competition, will be really important. Everyone saw the DeepSeek news around AI. We've seen the TikTok ban and then reversal. So in terms of great power politics, there's a lot that will be happening between the US and China that'll impact this region, that will impact the country as a whole. And then, as always, the big impact to US firms that comes from retaliatory action. Any tariffs have a retaliatory action. So far, most of our global partners and stakeholders have been signaling sort of targeted tariffs, not broad-based ones, and not really targeting industries that San Diego is really competitive in. So that's what we know so far. And if we go to the final slide, as we sit in a moment that we know will be full of volatility, when we know things will change really rapidly, and we know that those changes will disproportionately impact the small and midsize firms that are in our region, there's a few things that we can do to sort of play offense. One is to really lean into some programs that already exist. The Foreign Trade Zone Program is one that I would flag in particular. It's a federal program, long-running program but managed by the city of San Diego. Any establishment can apply for their establishment to be designated a free trade zone. So that can really help to sort of manage some of the risk associated with changing tariff rules over the next several months and years. So really leaning in, and I know that colleagues from the city, Liz Studa Baker and Karina Danek are here for this item. Two, the World Trade Center, in partnership with a lot of regional partners, runs the Metro Connect Export Accelerator Program. That's been focused for many years at supporting small and midsize firms, helping them access international markets, grow their exports, create jobs here at home. We've served about 90 companies over the last seven or eight years. They've turned a small investment in their firms into almost $100 million in new exports and hundreds of new jobs in the region. So those companies in particular are going to need a great deal of assistance and support to be able to access the bulk of the world's customers. And then finally, in 2017, those of, many of us will remember during the first Trump administration and the initial renegotiation of then NAFTA into the USMCA. It was really, really important for this region to have our data-driven story straight in terms of what the value is of those binational supply chains to this region, the jobs here, and what it means for the country as a whole. So we will be working with all of our partners in the months ahead on a refresh of our binational trade and competitiveness study to make sure that the data and the resources that we all need to be good advocates for jobs in this region is at everyone's fingertips, and we are all singing from the same song sheet. So that is all I have for today. Appreciate the time, and with that, I will conclude.
Thank you so much. So we're going to begin with an opportunity for our board to ask questions or seek any clarification, and then we will turn to the public for comments. So I actually have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I want to make sure, a few things I wanted to highlight that I thought were interesting and had some points of clarification. So I thought it was very interesting that 98% of US exporters are small businesses. I thought that was very, really struck me, as you know, who is really impacted, you know, by the global economic tariff regime. I also just wanted to ask about this, 60% of US-Mexico trade is an intermediate good. So just to clarify, that basically is a company in the US might import something that they then use to make a product that then is sold to this consumer. So it's not direct to consumer necessarily. It's an intermediate input that they then kind of put into whatever they're making, and then it goes to the consumer. Is that about right?
Correct. That's exactly correct. And for a lot of the sort of really knowledge-intensive industries that we thrive in in San Diego, you might have hundreds and hundreds of components from Canada, from the US, and from Mexico, and they might cross the border multiple times before finally, I mean, when you're thinking about a medical device or an automobile, et cetera, before they reach their end consumer.
So that would mean, just to summarize, so if something is sort of produced in the United States or really produced in San Diego, but it has a lot of inputs, intermediate inputs that are imported from other countries like Mexico, then it would increase the cost of producing that good that is made in the United States because the cost of the inputs has increased. Is that correct?
That is correct. And it's worth pointing out that that increased cost, if you think about it as like a 25% increase, since that's the number that's been thrown around, that hits the cost of the item itself. That doesn't mean that the cost of the item goes up by 25%. That means that the cost to make the item goes up by 25%, and then you add whatever margin it is on top of that. So you might see prices that would increase, you know, three or four times based on the 25% increase to the cost of the item.
So a 25% increase in the cost of the intermediate inputs could theoretically, potentially, lead to a three- to four-time increase in the cost of the goods to consumers. So that's sort of like a lot of inflation. I don't know how to quantify it, but it just sounds like a lot of inflation.
Potentially. And it depends a lot on the good itself and what the margins are on that good, the profit margins on that good. But yes, when you talk about tariffs being a tax that's passed on to the end consumer, the percentages you're talking about are focused on the product, the cost to produce the good. And so, yes, you could see price increases far in excess of the original tariff amount.
So these kind of big increases in tariffs could lead to like pretty significant inflationary impacts, potentially?
Potentially, but there's, I mean, there's a lot that goes into, you know, how companies decide to price their items. And so time will tell, but potentially, that's true, and that's why you hear people say tariffs are inherently inflationary because they increase prices for consumers and businesses.
That's super interesting and helpful. So then just going to this graph about the San Diego economy, that sort of, you had one graph that was really focused on San Diego, San Diego exports and imports. And so you had the top 10 export goods and the top 10 import goods. The top 10 import goods, so we have automotive, bill and light-duty manufacturing, audio and video equipment, semiconductors and related devices. Where are these all coming from? I think part of what I'm trying to better understand is, are these inputs that we just talked about, right, the intermediate inputs, coming from countries that might be targeted for our tariffs that we then might anticipate would impose retaliatory tariffs? So that's kind of the background of my question, like where are all these goods coming from?
Our biggest trade partners in San Diego, similar to the rest of the country, are Mexico and Canada, followed by China and then followed by Europe. And that's true for almost every region in the United States. And so as you hear the threat of tariffs focused on Mexico and Canada and China, that is because most American imports come from those places.
And they come from them not just like a pass-through, but if you use the rules of origin to define where they quote "come from," they would be defined as coming from Mexico, not just sort of like going through the land border, but they came from somewhere else?
It would depend entirely on the industry and on the good. So if you're talking about televisions, for example, you have a large proportion of televisions that come across the southern border. Most of those operations in Mexico are assembly operations, and a lot of the electronic components come from Asia. By contrast, if you talk about medical devices, most of those are manufactured in Mexico, and the Mexican and the US content is higher. So it depends a lot by industry.
I think I'm specifically thinking about these one that you said are top 10 goods in San Diego, right? Trying to better understand. I'm really trying to think about, okay, what's going to happen if we face big kind of tariffs on these imports specifically in San Diego? So trying to understand, you know, are they coming, are they being imported from Mexico or from China, where we know that there's been talk of potential tariffs? Or are they coming from, I don't know, Italy? I haven't heard like a whole thing around Italian tariffs.
Most of those top 10 imports, and I could actually send through more detail on those imports and exports by country of origin. We do have access to that data. I just don't have it with me. But the majority of it is Mexico and China. And a lot of what you see in trade policy around, you know, USMCA, et cetera, has to do with rules of origin, and that's because very few goods, with the exception of certain consumer goods, are all from one place. And so a big piece of the USMCA has to do with what proportion of the good comes from North America versus China or elsewhere, once you put it all together.
That would be great. I mean, we don't need to come back to the board, but maybe just a follow-up memo or note to our board offices. I would love to kind of get that breakdown because I think what's interesting to me, the way I'm understanding this, is if our exporters, for, you know, motor vehicle parts, semiconductors, electromedical apparatuses, other plastic products, if they face big tariffs on where they're sending these goods or selling them, they might see falling market share and therefore sort of like lower demand and have to do layoffs or sort of might hurt their businesses on that side. On the other side, if they're importers and they're using these products kind of to build their stuff locally, the increase in the prices might like drive up their prices, and it might like either be inflationary, or they might end up having to make trade-offs because they're like, well, we can't, we're not going to be competitive at these higher prices. So it would be super helpful. That would be great. Sorry, I know my colleagues must have questions, but I am so grateful for this. I have a couple other comments. If you could just talk a little bit more about how this foreign trade zone program might work?
So the Foreign Trade Zone Program is a federal program by the US government decades and decades ago. And the goal of it is to help US exporters be more competitive. So the way it works essentially is that the foreign trade zone operates outside of the US Customs Territory, even though it's located within the United States. And this is not something that is unique to the United States. A lot of countries have free trade zone programs, foreign trade zone programs. And essentially, what that means for a company is you can import all sorts of inputs into your foreign trade zone establishment. You can add, you can do that duty-free, and almost, it's almost, you can warehouse them there without paying any duties. You can add value to that thing, do additional manufacturing, assembly, whatever it is, and then you don't pay any duty until it leaves your foreign trade zone. And if it goes into the domestic customs territory, if you're exporting it to the United States, for example, from your foreign trade zone establishment, then you would then pay the duty on that finished good when you export it. If you re-export it somewhere else in the world, you never pay US duties on it at all. So it's a way to incentivize, you know, sort of US manufacturing, warehousing, distribution jobs in the United States by shielding those jobs from the impact of tariffs. One unique piece of the Foreign Trade Zones Program in the United States and here in San Diego is that any company can apply to have their establishment designated as a foreign trade zone. So you do not have to be inside a physical zone. You can essentially say this proportion of my warehouse, my plant, et cetera, has foreign trade zone status. Everything that I manage from here is for export, and I manage it differently, and therefore I don't pay duties when I bring in those goods. So you can imagine that, for example, if your business model has been to do most of your importing and distribution in Mexico, and suddenly that's no longer possible because of a new tariff regime or a new IMAX regime, you could use the foreign trade zone model to protect against, you know, some paying significant tariffs on your full warehouse full of goods. And you can manage that a little better based on when it goes to the consumer. So you can manage it from a cash flow perspective. You can also use it to increase value-add manufacturing in the United States.
Thank you. Just a question and then a comment, and then I'll be done. So I'm curious for our CIO, would it be feasible for Edgar to take a look at whether there might be a role for the county to support or be a partner? Not to say we would, but to sort of find out if there's anything more we can do to support the foreign trade zone program and maybe send a memo back to our board with some options?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I was just going to ask you to put that, your request into a motion so that we can capture it into the minute order.
Okay. Happy to do that, but let me just kind of make another comment. I think what I, listen to this, I obviously have a lot of questions. We don't know what's going to happen, clearly like concerned for our local economy. And the thing that definitely strikes me is, you know, what does this do to our local tax base? What is it due to local sales tax revenue? What does it do to, you know, all the revenue that we rely on at the county to provide a lot of the investments and services that people need, you know, tackling homelessness, you know, behavioral health, all these initiatives that we've really been leaning into, to, you know, public safety, fire protection, you know, making sure that our sheriffs are fully funded. Like all of these services that are so essential to the county are, of course, driven by our tax revenue. And if we're seeing, you know, disruption to our local economic activity and potentially shrinking tax base. So that is definitely an area, like of all, you know, there's sort of that ancillary piece of a what does this do to our ability to provide services to our local community if our tax base is potentially impacted? So that's on my radar, and I don't want to make a motion without hearing from my colleagues. So let me turn it to my colleagues, and if there's kind of need for a motion, I'll do that after, at the end. But thank you, and I would also be very interested in this binational trade and competitive study when you're done. You know, maybe you could send this to all of our board offices. I don't know that we need to come back unless everyone else wants you to, but that would be great.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I know Denise Garcia and the Binational Affairs Office at the county will be very much involved in that study.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, and thanks, Nikki. Appreciate the presentation. And I kind of globbed on to one of your statements where you said, you know, targeted tariffs may be good, but broad tariffs, you know, potentially could be a lot more harmful, I guess, is one of the things I heard you say. But one of the things, for, I represent North County, San Diego, and I got a lot of avocado growers who are complaining about the avocados coming across the border are a lot cheaper, primarily because of our water rate, prices and things like that here. I don't know. If you have any comment on that at all, it's not really a question. It's just more of a statement that our avocado farmers are struggling.
I mean, I think you make a good point about what the end goal of a tariff regime is matters a lot as to whether those tariffs are warranted or not. And I know everyone in the region is really concerned about avocados and whether the cost of their avocados are going to go up. I think that's the most common question we receive around these issues. I do think you raise another important point, though, about what does it look like for this region to play offense instead of defense? We can talk about the implications of potential tariffs on this region, but one thing we know is that when San Diego firms can compete globally, when they can win, that's good for the region, increases the tax base, it increases job creation. And so when we look at the key industries that are really valuable for creating jobs in this region, I think we need to ask ourselves, with a global economy that's changing rapidly, how do we, as a region, play offense so they can do their jobs better and create more jobs here at home?
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, a lot of these avocado trees are just being ripped up. Now, in some cases, they're putting in vineyards and making money that way, but, which is a good thing. But it's just, one of the things that I hear a lot from my constituents, particularly the farming and egg business. So, thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery, stop.
Yes, thank you so much. Just kind of the question about the Foreign Trade Zone Program. As I'm looking at this in sort of using the federal program to help with and mitigate some of the potential impacts, it is a federal program, and I'm wondering if the intent of the potential tariffs will conflict with the, with this program? And if there is a potential for the program maybe being stalled, or, you know, we received notice this morning that, as of 5:00 PM today, there's a hold on federal grants that was very unexpected, right? So I'm just wondering if there's been any thought behind whether or not this program, although it is decades old, could continue on with sort of a different intention behind potential tariffs coming forward?
It's an interesting question, and obviously, anything can happen. And to clarify, so the Foreign Trade Zone Program doesn't mean that firms do not pay tariffs. It just means they do not pay tariffs until the good enter, until the good goes to the final consumer.
I understand that. I get that. That's for like people who, you know, having a back-and-forth conversation about impacts of a program. Is there, I guess I'm just, I'm wondering, I understand what you're saying, just wondering about impacts and the aesthetics of a program like this. At the end of the day, it's a federal program. Are there other things locally that we can do that are not dependent upon? Are there other things locally that we can do that are not dependent upon a federal program that may or may not be there? I guess is, maybe that's another question.
No, it's a very good question. And so the city of San Diego administers that program locally, the foreign trade zone program. And it is revenue generating in the region. Firms do pay to be designated foreign trade zones. And generally, that is a good choice if obviously the fee that they would pay to be designated is far less than the tariffs they would pay to import those goods into the region. So I, anything can happen, but I don't have reason to believe that that program will be impacted at the federal level. However, to answer your second question, which I think is very important, I think that there's a lot that we can do within this region, understanding our assets, our companies, their supply chains, the jobs that we have here, to help them ameliorate some of the effects of uncertainty in the global marketplace. I think anything that we can do in this region to make it easier to do business here, to be able to move quickly and more agilely, like that is what we're all going to have to do over the next four years. Because if we know one thing, we remember from last time, things will change very rapidly on a day-to-day basis and all of us are going to have to be prepared to meet that moment, regardless of what it is, and not just play defense against it, but play offense and figure out what the best outcomes are for our companies and our communities.
Yes. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. That concludes my questions and comments.
Supervisor Anderson, any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion, I'll make a slight amendment. So to receive the presentation on the impact of potential tariffs and then sort of building on my colleagues' questions is to also come back at a later date with sort of further assessment of whether there's anything we as a county government could or should be doing, some options to support our local communities and our local economy and our local businesses, including but not limited to the foreign trade zone program. That would be my motion. Okay. I have a second by Supervisor Desmond. And with that, please.
Take a public comment.
Oh, apologies. Thank you, Andrew. We'll take public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Lawson Reamer, we have 10 requests to speak on this item, four in person, and six requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received two ecomments in favor. Any individuals that requested to speak on item 15 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. All speakers are in opposition. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak. You'll have two minutes to address the board and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward Alan C., allegedly Audra, Mark, and Consuelo. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Andrew, before you start more time, is this place slide seven? Is that possible?
It's your time. Come on up to the podium, please.
They're perfect. Okay, when you're ready. It's not showing. Okay, thank you for putting up slide seven. Take a very close look at that. 262 billion. This-
And I'll need you to state your name again.
Alan C., I keep forgetting. Sorry, Andrew. Yeah, but look at that, 262 billion. This segues directly into the sewage problem down south. Directly. So I don't know if I can talk about it now or later, but I guess I'll talk about it. But drill in your head, 262 billion at stake, and we can use that to negotiate the sewage bill. Anyways, that should be part of the thing here. Okay, let's go a little bit of history lesson. Back in 1920s is when we started income tax. Before then, terrorists paid for our government. Phenomenal. The first Theodore Roosevelt, Theodore said, let's tax the rich people. That's the start of the tariffs, or removal of tariffs. The second Roosevelt said, okay, hell with it. Let's tax everybody. And look what it led us today. Majority of governments funded by the taxpayer. What President Trump is doing, he's saying, let's go back to tariff. Because unions, what you guys buy right up there, they're being faulty because OSHA, no OSHA down in Mexico, pay is like $2 an hour. If I own a company and I don't need to be tariffed, hell yeah, I'm going to move my company down to Mexico. That's the point of the tariff, to make equal footing. The avocado grows up north. Why? They're getting sucked out because they're only paying like a dollar an hour down there, maybe less. So of course, that's why we're sucking up here. That's why you have to have tariffs. And when you put down your federal free zone, you're not going to override the feds anyways, Terry Lawson-Reamer and this county, you're not going to override what the federal level of the terrorists are. And by doing that zone-free whatever, again, just like your silly grants, you're picking winners and losers, and that is not right. Consider that 262 billion when you talk about sewage. Make that part of the negotiation. I yield back.
Next speaker, please.
My person uses the name Audra. It's a wonder what tariffs will do. It's a wonder when you guys should be actually asking, are we to blame for these, for allowing? And I'm wondering why you didn't put people that you import and export. That's something you should have added to the list. Yeah, it's just interesting because it's like, you know, when you have a threat of a tariff and countries are like, I'm not going to take my people back that invaded your country, all of a sudden they want to take them back. It's pretty cool, right? But if you guys are concerned, you should be thinking about your complicit and culpable behaviors that have led to things like this needing to take place for aiding and abetting illegal aliens for years and not even acknowledging what it's doing to the country. So, good job for you guys. If this happens and there's an increase for the people, it's your fault because you should have been doing something differently instead of being like, we want to be a sanctuary for these people and then we're going to be like, why are they putting out tariffs? Super weird. Super weird, cause and effect. Right? But I mean, why would you guys want to take responsibility for that? Because, you know, you're just providing a sanctuary for criminals, rapists, and murderers. It's nice. And we can't even acknowledge the little girl that was raped, ever. Instead, you're protecting the predators over her. It's interesting. Ah, but yeah, so at least these countries like Colombia and China and other places are going to take their people back, right? Even though it sucks that we have to, again, pay for that and we paid for them to come in and we're just spending all this money on it. It's interesting, the way you guys work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark, Audra and Alan are both right. Tariffs are always a hidden tax on the people. And of course, Alan's right that that is a way to keep things in check when people move their companies to Mexico and we don't get much employment from that. However, it's always a scam. For instance, I was listening and I really appreciate your presentation. And the foreign trade zone, from what I understand, from what you said, basically, first of all, the small businesses will never even know about this, just like it's almost impossible to find an exemption for landlords for rent increase or, there is a notice if you search it out. Now, when you guys make stuff, you should have programs where the second that you put in any search on any search engine, right at the top, it would come up with everything you need right there for free. Download. Here's the PDF. Here's what you need. Here's what you do. Here's how. You never do that. So this will be, most people will never hear this meeting and will never know about this. And will never get the advantage of the free trade zone, which isn't too much of an advantage for a lot of Americans because basically you said it relieves them from some of the tariff in their zone and if it goes out to another country. But if it goes back into the United States, where we all buy it, of course, there will be a tariff and it will raise the prices on us. It's always a hidden tax on us. You also mentioned the USMCA. I appreciate that. Trump signed it, but Biden did not rescind it. And chapter 30 says that there's a Foreign Trade Commission. We only have one American member on. And all the other members are Mexico and Canada. USMCA, this is the North American Union they're trying to form to make global governance. It's all a scam.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay. Consuelo. So, yeah, it's such a game, so much uncertainty. We know the tariffs will increase and once again, the people will pay and be penalized. Who wins? Certainly not the people. The feds are happy. The system continues to win. We continue paying for the junk they offer us. Absolute abuse. Everything is so backwards in this system. It's mind-blowing how so many, especially including the people on the dais, just continue to go along with it. Good lip service, great performances regarding their concern over these tariffs. But here's the deal. Society is collapsing and the people are starting to recognize that the reason they feel like they're mentally ill is that they're living in a system that's not designed to suit the human spirit. The system was never broken. It was built this way. The first step to changing the system is to stop complying with it. Wake up, San Diego. Wake up, humanity. It's not going to get better until you get involved.
Thank you. Now, here from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
So, tariffs. All right, well, let's talk about this. So first off, I want to introduce a term that some of you may be aware of. It's called fuck around, find out. So the fuck around part, excuse my French, by the way, is voting for a lunatic who says that he's going to make enemies with our trading partners, the countries like Mexico, Canada, China, et cetera. Okay. We are now at the find out part where that madman decides, all right, now I'm going to implement these tariffs, which, by the way, it's just not, tariffs don't actually hold these countries accountable. Literally, all it does is make American constituents pay more for goods like groceries and gas and stuff, which leads me to my next point. To all the people who have spent the last three to four years saying that Brandon was responsible for higher gas prices and higher groceries, where are you? Because all of a sudden, when I'm scrolling through Twitter, I see a bunch of idiots saying, well, I'm going to pay $20 for coffee if it means we can have a white ethno state. I mean, I don't want to hear any Republican, anyone who voted for Donald Trump complaining about tariffs because all of us are going to face the consequences of the votes of the likes of Alan C. and other people who voted for Donald Trump. I would like to remind everyone, of course, San Diego County overall did not vote for Donald Trump. Most San Diego County people voted for Kamala Harris. But to those of you who did vote for Donald Trump, guess what? Now, we're all paying more money because of you guys being uneducated and not-
Now, here from the next caller.
All of both. I'm glad their word. Two organizations presenting this makes it less likely that it will be actually one-sided or use older misleading data. We must remember that this administration is new and like most campaigns has made a lot of promises to its base, which may or may not work out. These probably won't. So keep an open mind and do not let fear control your actions. In fact, the presenter basically said there will be little or no impact on San Diego. She also acknowledged that the pronouncements by Donald Trump might not all be implemented, probably won't. And price increases above the tariffs are fear-based and I do not think we need this in an objective discussion. Shame on the presenter, by the way, for not carrying around even data on what country actually has what tariffs. I think that sort of thing also increases the fear factor. And I must also say that I am disappointed to see that there wasn't even a partial presentation posted in the agenda documents as of Wednesday, the 22nd. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, here from the next caller.
Hey, it's Truth. For what reason could county staff not do this presentation? Why did it have to be a private entity? And why did they push a fear narrative? Because free trade zones are nothing but scams. It's like a corporation keeping a profit in offshore banks, a way to avoid paying what is owed to the country. And what's missing from the presentation? Addressing the sewage emergency, which suggests, again, that tariffs, item 21, is mere political theater. But feel free to address my point because the Oti Mesa East toll border crossing could have what is essentially a tariff, a required mitigation fund for wastewater infrastructure under SB 10. Yet Nora Vargas and all of you at the county and most of Sandeg have refused to acknowledge the potential for a tangible solution. Or the country could also implement tariffs on Mexico, which is the majority of imports. That could be a tool to force Mexico to finally clean their sewage this country has allowed. Yes, there would be some negative price effects, but they'd be temporary and mostly affecting some fruit prices. All of this was avoidable, though, if all the past presidents had kept the tariffs we always had, rather than implementing free trade fascism to benefit unloyal multinational corporations and their investors. We are obviously not singing from the same song sheet, nor are we obviously living in the same reality. Because you can ask Imperial Beach, you can ask Coronado, you can ask Nestor, you can ask Oti Mesa, what their reality is. Because it's not what's in this presentation. It's not what a lot of you have to live with, the health effects of these bad policy decisions. So I leave you with one simple message because all you talked about was goods, 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 money and goods. Well, guess what? I choose people over goods and I will continue to fight against bad policies that are affecting the South Bay that no one wants to address.
Thank you. And now, here from the next caller.
Hey, Justin here. How you guys doing? Yeah, that's what we're talking about. Here, I got a question for you. How do we prevent other countries from using slave labor to produce goods? How would we punish other countries from basically cheating their workers and paying them a slave wage? I mean, it's wonderful, the fact that, you know, we could go ahead and use slave labor in other countries and not pay a dime for it. Like, we could pay pennies on the dollar making the shit and charge them. You guys claim you're looking out for the people, not only here in the United States, but you're looking out for them all over the world. So why wouldn't you want to punish countries that don't care for their environment? Why wouldn't you want to punish countries that go ahead and take the cheap way out, making ungodly amount of money for themselves? No, 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 no. Because you want your shit cheap and they bribe you by having your shit cheap, right? We understand if we actually followed, we had our shit built on the way that we claimed that we want the world to live with, our shit would cost 10 times as much money. But you don't want to recognize that because you really don't care about slaves. You don't care about the environment. All you care about is the green in your pocketbook. I'm tired of this shit. Now, I'm going to, I'm doing my best to replace, not because I'm afraid of you, because I never have been. You threatened me multiple times. You throw me in jail and now you claim that they're malloy-
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have a motion by myself, a second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson-Reamer, that motion passes with Supervisor Anderson voting no, although there are supervisors who are present voting aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're moving forward to item 18. I want to be respectful. We've got- no, although there are supervisors who are present voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we're moving forward to item 18. I want to be respectful. We've got a whole big contingent of our public safety officers here, and they have a lot to do. So I want to make sure they have a chance to make their presentation, and then after that, we will be able to break for lunch. So turn the floor over to our team. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the board. The images of the Los Angeles fires and their aftermath have been devastating, and we've experienced large disasters in our own region, learning valuable lessons and boosting our preparedness and response efforts to protect our communities. Every season is wildfire season in San Diego, and recent wildfires remind us of the level of destruction that can take place under high-risk conditions. County government has a critical responsibility to prepare for the next catastrophic incident and respond when the moment strikes to save lives. The presentation today covers the system we have in place, the steps that have been taken, and the critical need to remain diligent with our approach to emergency preparedness and response. I'd like to turn the presentation over to Andrew Strong, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, to introduce our presenters and kick off the presentation. Andrew.
And thank you, Ebony. Since the devastating wildfires in 2003, the county has invested nearly $1 billion to strengthen preparedness and response capabilities and capacity in our region to be ready for all types of disasters. We've invested in firefighter staffing, fire engines, firefighting helicopters, hazardous fuel and flood control management program enhancements, alert and warning system improvements, emergency preparedness investments, and so much more. We also recognize that collaboration among agencies is critical. Our local safety response and recovery agencies, along with community organizations, work together closely to identify needs and amplify our resources. It's a long history of coordination. The county continues to work closely with the 18 cities, 13 fire districts, tribal fire departments, special districts, federal agencies, and the military to safeguard the region and provide assistance throughout San Diego's communities. A unique feature in the county is our Unified Disaster Council, which was established through a joint powers agreement between all 18 incorporated cities and the county. This body meets bi-monthly to coordinate planning activities, create regional policies, and ensure mutual aid is available to assist one another in the event of a disaster or major emergency in our region. Now, I'll turn the presentation over to Jeff Tony, the Director of the Office of Emergency Services, to speak more to emergency planning, preparedness, and coordination.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Investments made in the Office of Emergency Services over the last two decades has meant the department is one of only three in the state to be recognized by the National Emergency Management Accreditation Program for the county's work in hazard identification, risk assessment, incident management, and emergency public information. Our office is responsible for helping communities prepare for, respond to, and recover from disasters and other emergencies. OES takes an all hazards approach to emergency planning and preparedness that considers the range of disasters that may impact our region. OES has dozens of operational and hazard-specific plans and procedures that are regularly updated in collaboration with our partners. Our staff designs mitigation strategies to help jurisdictions and unincorporated communities avoid emergencies or lessen their severity. We also collaborate with partners to hold joint training and exercises to enhance knowledge and test capabilities to effectively respond regardless of where the emergency occurs. Community preparedness is also a critical part of building community resilience. We teach community members how to be disaster-prepared, including how to make a personal disaster plan, make a go-bag with essential supplies, and encourage the public to register to receive emergency alerts so that they know when they need to be ready, get set, and go. We also work with partners to educate individuals with access and functional needs to bolster their readiness in case of evacuation. Working with a wide variety of stakeholders and sectors to leverage our collective strengths and preparedness helps build more resilient communities. When an emergency occurs within our county, the response is led by incident commanders in the field and supported and coordinated by jurisdictional emergency operations centers. Each jurisdiction and special district is responsible for managing emergencies within its boundaries, including the county for the unincorporated area. When an emergency exceeds the local government's capability to respond, the county, state, and even federal government may be requested to provide support and assistance to local cities as they manage and coordinate emergency response activities. When a significant disaster affects the unincorporated area, the county activates our Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, to coordinate those response efforts. The activation of the EOC is an enterprise-wide effort. Representatives from fire, law enforcement, public works, health and human services, and purchasing and contracting are often assigned to assist with resource management, public information, stakeholder coordination, and data analysis. Partner organizations often assign representatives to the EOC to facilitate the coordination as well, including the American Red Cross, 211, school districts, and utilities. The county may also activate our EOC when a local jurisdiction requests county assistance or when an incident is affecting multiple jurisdictions and a higher level of coordination is required. In these cases, OES follows California's Standardized Emergency Management System, or SEMS, and serves as the lead for regional coordination and communication with state and federal supporting Access to timely and accurate information is critical during an emergency, especially during evacuations. Emergency Services and the Unified Disaster Council have invested in technology over the last two decades to bolster the region's preparedness and response capabilities. In 2024, we implemented a new evacuation management software system, Genesis Protect, which allows first responders to manage evacuation zones more effectively and be more surgical when making those tough decisions. The system has helped first responders from the county's unincorporated area and in the city of San Diego safely evacuate more than 15,000 people this month alone. All local law enforcement agencies, including the San Diego Sheriff's Office and San Diego PD, use the system in collaboration with fire agencies to send evacuation warnings and orders to move people out of harm's way. We encourage all to download the Genesis Protect app and visit Alert San Diego to add addresses and contact information important to you and your family. Then, when an emergency notification goes out, you will be alerted. The software also allows us to send wireless emergency alerts to nearly every cell phone in a zone to instruct families to evacuate the area and notify residents where temporary evacuation points or emergency shelters are located. I'll now turn the presentation over to Fire Chief Tony Meacham, who will share details on fire protection in San Diego County.
Thank you, Jeff, and good morning to the members of the board. The 2003 fire storm was not only a wake-up call to the region, but it changed the landscape for fire protection and emergency response. It demonstrated that wildfires have no boundaries and urban areas can be decimated by a fire that starts in the backcountry. At that time, much of the rural unincorporated area was served by a patchwork of volunteer fire departments with little funding and inadequate resources. For county government, the most significant change came with the partnership with CAL Fire in 2005 and the formation of County Fire in 2008. With 20 agencies consolidating in County Fire and massive investments by the county, we have transformed a vision into one of the largest fire protection agencies in the state, as shown in blue on the map. It's important to distinguish the jurisdictional responsibilities in the region. City fire departments and fire protection districts cover the local responsibility areas. CAL Fire covers wildland and state responsibility areas, and the U.S. Forest Service and other federal agencies cover federal responsibility areas. The number of fire agencies may seem unmanageable, but it's the opposite. The level of coordination and assistance is unprecedented. Through the partnership with CAL Fire, we have an incredibly robust level of service within the County Fire Protection District. Through a blend of county and state resources, we provide coverage through a total of 39 fire stations, five fire camps, and two aviation facilities. At peak staffing, we have over 1,100 personnel within County Fire and CAL Fire, which includes operations, support, administrative, emergency medical services, and community risk reduction. Your board directly funds 325 positions within CAL Fire. In addition to the state apparatus, County Fire provides nearly 100 operational vehicles. Our region, including county assets, has 12 aerial firefighting resources stationed and available. County Fire continues to invest in technology that helps us detect, track, and respond to wildfires, including 150 cameras and real-time monitoring and resource availability. The Lilac and Border fires that broke out last week demonstrate the strength of the response we have here in the region. A robust level of state and local resources were ready to respond when the fire started. County Fire's Community Risk Reduction Program provides a cohesive pre-fire strategy focused on public education, defensible space inspections, structure hardening, fuels management, and protection of evacuation corridors. The roadside brush maintenance program clears up to 20 feet along key evacuation roads with over 800 miles of county and state roads being treated since 2022. In addition, County Fire has performed fuel break work last year on 124 acres in the rural area to help our firefighters effectively attack wildfires when they start. Our defensible space inspectors conducted over 52,000 inspections in 2024, with over 90% of homeowners in compliance. Another best practice is home hardening your home, especially for structures built before code updates in 2008. This includes hardscaping within five feet, ember-resistant vents, and other structural improvements using non-combustible materials near your home and defense zone. The goal of the county's $24 million home hardening program is to provide critical improvements to around 500 homes in Dulzera, Campo, and Petrero. Finally, our staff work closely with fire safe councils and community emergency response teams to bolster preparedness, adopt community wildfire protection plans, and support community chipping events. Within the past couple of years, the state has substantially increased CAL Fire's budget and invested heavily in vegetation management. On the heels of the devastating fires in Los Angeles, I'm expecting additional investments by the state to bolster wildland fire protection. We have heard reports in other jurisdictions about challenges to maintain fire engines and other apparatus and supply chain issues impacting the purchase of new fire engines. We are already taking steps to ensure that we don't face the same challenges, and we appreciate any additional support to make certain we stay at peak availability for apparatus. There's a related action today that references the need for additional Type 1 water tenders. Most of our district is groundwater-dependent, so we rely on our water tenders to support the fire response. The county made a significant investment in purchasing a twin-engine helicopter a couple of years ago. CAL Fire and the San Diego County Sheriff's Office have a terrific relationship in sharing responsibilities for the helicopter fleet in the region, and continue to replace and modernizing the aging helicopter fleet is essential for both enhanced fire protection and crew safety. We must also stay in step with CAL Fire increase in staffing and cost. We have already adjusted staffing changes, and we must plan for any additional cost increases. Lastly, I want to stress the importance of maintaining defensible space inspection and the continued prioritization of fuel reduction efforts. Preparing for the next firestorm is essential. I will now turn the presentation over to Captain Ted Greenawald with the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Chief Meacham. The Sheriff's Emergency Services Division includes the Special Enforcement Detail, Crisis Negotiation Team, K-9 Unit, Bomb and Arson Unit, and of particular note for this presentation, the Emergency Planning Detail and ASTRIA, our aerial support to regional enforcement agencies. The Emergency Planning Detail oversees the law enforcement response to wildfires and other critical incidents within the county. As the chief law enforcement officer for San Diego County, the sheriff is the law enforcement mutual aid coordinator for the county and serves as the conduit for local, regional, and statewide mutual aid requests. The Emergency Planning Detail represents the sheriff on the county's evacuation committee, a partnership with county OES, city emergency managers, CAL Fire, and local fire and law enforcement agencies. Over the past few years, the county's evacuation committee has overseen the regional implementation of the Hilo Alert Warning System and the transition from the county's public safety grid maps to the Genesis Emergency Management System, which facilitates both evacuation and repopulation During a fire, the sheriff's office plays a key role in supporting fire and emergency services partners. Our role is focused on ensuring the evacuation of impacted communities, protecting rights of way, and protecting property from the possibility of looters. Deputies are issued fire gear, receive ongoing training on responding to wildfires, and participate in regional exercises with fire agencies. Fire preparation and response continuously evolves, underscoring the necessity for advances in resources to ensure the safety and well-being of our diverse communities. The decision to evacuate an area is not made lightly. Incident Command will assess and evaluate the need for evacuations with cooperating agencies, and the sheriff's office or local law enforcement agency will order and conduct evacuations. The decision to evacuate will depend entirely upon the nature, scope, and severity of the emergency, the number of people affected, and what actions are necessary to protect the public. Due to the dynamic nature of disasters, evacuation routes, temporary evacuation points, and shelters are pre-planned but are not pre-published. If you receive an evacuation order, it means there is an immediate threat to your life, and you need to leave right now. If you receive an evacuation warning, it means there is an impending danger to your life or property. Start gathering important items for your family and pets. Any individuals who need extra time to evacuate or anyone with large animals should pack up and leave when a warning has been issued. In March 2023, a public safety campaign was launched to announce the Hilo Alert Warning System, which alerts entire neighborhoods they are in immediate danger. Sheriff's patrol helicopters and patrol vehicles are equipped with the Hilo feature, which makes a very loud and unique sound you will hear when you must evacuate immediately. The warning system is different from sirens you hear regularly when deputies, paramedics, and firefighters respond to emergency calls. Hilo is only used during wildfires, flash floods, earthquakes, other natural disasters, and critical incidents requiring the evacuation of a particular area. The goal is to reach as many people as possible with emergency instructions even when phone lines are not working or there are no internet or mobile networks available. The sheriff's office also is a partner in the county's AgPass program, which allows commercial farmers and ranchers in the unincorporated areas of the county limited access to their properties located in restricted areas to conduct essential commercial agricultural Sheriff's ASTRIA is the aviation unit of the San Diego Sheriff's Office and has been providing aerial support to the department and our regional partners since 1971. ASTRIA averages about 5,500 missions per year. In 2024, there were over 6,400 missions with 301 fire responses and 287 rescue calls. ASTRIA currently has a fleet of eight helicopters with 13 pilots, five tactical flight officers, seven mechanics, and support staff. We are proud of the relationship we have with CAL Fire San Diego. ASTRIA and CAL Fire Helotech are co-located at Gillespie Field. When a fire is reported, a sheriff's pilot and a crew of specially-trained firefighters respond together to lead the initial attack. During fire season, two fire rescue helicopters are staffed. These helicopters can respond to most areas of San Diego County within 15 minutes. The firefighters are quickly inserted near the fire, and ASTRIA provides immediate aerial support with water drops. During rescues, CAL Fire personnel operate the helicopter's hoist, and onboard rescue specialists provide rapid on-scene patient treatment and coordinate care. In 2021, CAL Fire added a paramedic to the team to provide advanced life support to those needing rescue. This unique model of fire rescue is not found anywhere else in the state. It exists due to the strong working relationship developed between CAL Fire and the San Diego Sheriff's Office since the Cedar Fire. I will now turn the presentation back to Andrew Strong.
And thank you, Captain. In addition to the work of OES, County Fire, and the Sheriff's Office, other county departments work to ensure our communities are prepared for emergencies. Animal Services often deploys animal control officers to help round up and transport large animals and/or may provide pet care and shelter as families move from dangerous areas. The Health and Human Services Agency connects families and individuals to critical supports and services. These include behavioral health supports, coordination of public health and medical care services, and safety net programs. Environmental health and quality responds by inspecting emergency shelters during disasters. Its Hazers Incident Response Team responds jointly with the San Diego Fire to investigate and mitigate chemical-related emergencies or complaints. Public Works, or DPW, dedicates resources year-round in the unincorporated areas of the region to prepare for storms by inspecting and cleaning channels, culverts, roads, and storm drain inlets, as well as posting road closure signs at known flooding spots. Once the storm hits, DPW crews plow snow in the mountains, remove- Its Hazers Incident Response Team responds jointly with the San Diego Fire to investigate and mitigate chemical-related emergencies or complaints. Public Works, or DPW, dedicates resources year-round in the unincorporated areas of the region to prepare for storms by inspecting and cleaning channels, culverts, roads, and storm drain inlets, as well as posting road closure signs at known flooding spots. Once the storm hits, DPW crews plow snow in the mountains, remove downed trees and branches, clear mud and rock slides on county roads, and clear impacting storm drains. The county flood control team manages use of sandbags and erosion control. There are many other county departments that also play a critical role, such as purchasing and contracting, general services, county council, and the Chief Technology Office, to name a few. Also, county employees shift to emergency response roles when a disaster occurs through a program called the Ready Disaster Service workers. The program identifies and trains employees in advance of a disaster and provides for a coordinated and expedited response to the event by assisting residents in resuming their lives. Employees are assigned to a team that train with that team and are activated during exercises and real-world events in support of disaster operations. The county also works with our partners to share and amplify important emergency preparedness information with the public. While we can't predict when disasters will strike, there are steps everyone can take to be prepared. You see here the actions all residents can take to be ready and stay informed. The historic fires in Los Angeles and recent red flag conditions here in our county are reminders to act now. Create your own personal disaster plan. Personal disaster plan templates can be downloaded at alertsandiego.org, and their templates are available in 12 languages, and they include templates designed for individuals who may need assistance during a disaster. It's incumbent upon all individuals to have a plan for how they will evacuate or shelter in place when the time comes. Register your cell phones to receive emergency alerts when an incident may be impacting areas where you live or work. This is also an option to register to receive these alerts in accessible formats such as the American Sign Language. Download the Genesis Protect app. This app allows users to receive critical emergency updates for homes, schools, workplaces, and other locations that are important to them. And make an emergency supply kit, so you have the supplies you need to sustain your household for a minimum of 72 hours. Information on all these resources can be found at alertsandiego.org. Today's recommendation is to receive a presentation on the County of San Diego Emergency Preparedness and Response Efforts, and this concludes our presentation. We're available for questions.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate our team and all the work, and especially the ways in which we've learned our lessons in the past and really prepared moving forward. I just had a couple of questions. One was for Captain Greenwald. The question I keep getting from my constituents is around evacuations and how they are supposed to know what their evacuation route is supposed to be if there was to be an emergency.
Okay, it's on. As Mr. Tony mentioned, the alertsandiego.org, also Genesis Protect, we're able to push all of that information out. Typically, what'll happen is when there's an immediate evacuation order given, we'll push out a wireless emergency alert to the affected zones. We'll also push out a text message with that, and then also the Genesis Protect app will send a-
Sorry, let me just be a little more specific. I did catch that. I heard that, but it's not answering the question I asked, which was, how do they know what their evacuation route is? So, for example, we had the, I represent La Jolla. There was just a fire in La Jolla. Everyone got on their app, evacuate, you're in the evacuation zone, then you could down, I have the app, then I looked, you could see the map where it was mandatory and where it was advised. But the question I got from a bunch of constituents was, how are we supposed to know which route to take to evacuate? What's the evacuation route? They knew they needed to evacuate, they didn't know what route to take. So my question is, how are they supposed to know what route to take?
We can't possibly dictate which route every individual and every vehicle should take. When they have the Genesis Protect app, and they open up the app and look at the fire map that's available, essentially go where the fire's not. That sounds really overly simplistic, but that's the best method. If there's a fire on one side of Mount Solidad, don't drive toward that side of Mount Solidad, go the other direction down the hill into PB.
Okay, that's helpful. I think some of the questions are also coming from some of my constituents who live along the Five, who have said, hey, it's always traffic here all day long, no matter what, just in normal rush hour, we can't even get home, it's, you know, 90 minutes to drive home. Where are we supposed to go if the Five's all backed up, and we need to evacuate?
And that's a sustained problem that we've discussed within the evacuation committee, and that we've also, over the years, different routes, like the 67 corridor, essentially has the same problem if we have a mass evacuation. There's very limited space for people to go. You wind up, in that case, having to rely on surface streets and taking alternate routes.
I think, sorry, just to be clear. So, what I'm, the question I get from people is, okay, how do they know where to go? So, if they're being told to evacuate, the Five's back up, how do they know which, they don't want to end up in a traffic jam and then on foot, like running from the fire? So how do we, how would they know which is the best route? Or what do I tell them that they should do?
If we run into that situation, we can push out wireless emergency alerts, essentially telling people, hey, we need you to go north, south, east, west, whichever the most appropriate direction is. But again, it's going to be very, very difficult with 3.4 million people in the county to dictate which specific road we want everyone to take. While we're doing this, we're not passively sitting back and waiting, we're actually changing traffic patterns and that kind of stuff so that we can, in certain instances, take all of Grand or Garnet. All of Grand might be open for emergency vehicle traffic trying to get to the emergency, and all of Garnet, which would typically be east and west lanes, would be opened up to push people out toward Interstate 5 or out into Clermont Mesa to get them away from the fire.
That's helpful. And final question for you, and then some for Chief Meacham. The, you know, I represent a lot of jurisdictions, right? I have a lot of cities, a lot of different fire districts, different, we've got cities and sheriffs and different fire districts, all in District 3. So, is there a cohesive evacuation strategy that has been kind of thought of together that sort of Encinitas, Solana Beach, the City of San Diego, Del Mar have all kind of come together and said, hey, all our roads connect, clearly, what's our cohesive unified evacuation strategy? Or are these evacuation strategies sort of like jurisdiction by jurisdiction?
So, both. If an incident is restricted to one particular jurisdiction, we let them run with it. We let them push out what they need to on Genesis Protect, identifying which zones are going to be evacuated, which zones are going to be a warning. With the Border II fire, we actually had a large unpopulated area in the unincorporated area that was evacuated. We had warning areas in East Chula Vista. Those zones were set up, and then, and those were both done by CAL FIRE and the Sheriff's Office. Chula Vista came in and, okay, we're going to identify adjacent zones within our city that aren't under the warning, and we're going to put them under an advisory. So, we communicate back and forth with each other. Genesis is a regional platform. We worked on it together with the software provider, and we have an outstanding relationship between the different agencies for initial response, but then also quickly entering unified command. And that's not just unified command between law enforcement and fire, but if we have something that's right on the edge of the City of San Diego and Encinitas, Del Mar, Solana Beach, we're immediately tied in with them at the hip, and we're making those decisions together.
That's very helpful. I think that's responding to after the incident begins, right? That you're explaining to me that after the incident begins, how it's dealt with. I'm asking a different question. I ask about planning, not about incident response. My question was about assessing and planning around evacuation routes. Is that the ex ante before there's an emergency, not the emergency response?
Yes, ma'am. That was actually part of the presentation, that we pre-plan evacuation routes, we pre-plan shelters, we pre-plan temporary evacuation points, but we don't pre-publish them. So, based on population flow and that kind of stuff, we'll review them on an annual-
But that's planned across jurisdictions. It's not like-
Yes, that's-
That was my only question, was, I knew you were doing the pre-planning, I just wanted to ask if that pre-planning was cross-jurisdictional.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much. That's very, very helpful. Question for Chief Meacham. So appreciate all the work, and I'm sorry to keep you here, I know you have fires to fight. But I just was really interested in these helicopters. I know we've got another agenda item that my colleague brought about helicopters. So I just, it looked like the Lilac fire, that these helicopters were really helpful. It seemed like they're flying kind of 24/7, all day and all night. Just wanted to know, could talk a little bit more if you think additional firefight, like helicopters would be useful if we need those here in our fleet? And if so, do they need to be able to fly in the night, in the day, both? What does that look like?
Good afternoon, Supervisor. So, you know, aerial assets are one of the most critical things that we have in our arsenal. And over the years, the use of helicopters, not only for water dropping, but surveillance and mission planning, has become critical. We have evolved into 24 operations for helicopter operations. We were very fortunate during this month that CAL FIRE had moved additional helicopters here into San Diego. We flew on the Lilac fire, within the first 30 minutes, we had the aircraft in the air. I certainly believe that was a contributing factor to holding that fire at 80 acres. And then the same thing on the Border II fire. We had those aircraft here in the flight, on the flight crews on the fire. You know, I've been speaking to this for a while. We are at a really critical juncture with our county helicopter fleet. We have an aging fleet that we need to address the long-term replacement. Certainly, from my perspective as the fire chief, we need to evolve into night flying. It's very effective under certain conditions. But I also want to stress that we have a very methodical process to when we fly at night, because it is an increased risk for the air crews, and so we're a little bit slower and more methodical, but we absolutely need to really take a hard look at the future of our helicopter fleet and move that direction towards night operations.
Thank you very much, Chief. Supervisor Anderson?
Thank you very much. If I may, if you have not toured our facility, the Jeff Collins at OES runs. It is state-of-the-art. You've done an incredible job since the Cedar Fire, and everything that the county's doing, I'm so impressed with it, and I want to thank everybody for their hard work. I have just a couple of quick questions. With some of the, I saw the fires that you have, were many of those fires started from batteries? Are we having a lot of incidences with batteries? Like, you know, a lot of people have power walls now, a lot of people are storing their cars inside their garage that have batteries. Is that an issue at all?
Supervisor Anderson, through the chair. We're not seeing an increase specific to battery fires. Certainly, you know, we respond to electric vehicle fires on a daily basis. We're not really seeing any noticeable trend in the increase. One of the things we are having to address, though, and as you know, I just spent the last three weeks in Los Angeles, is the post-debris fire cleanup that involves lithium-ion batteries is something that we have to address on the backside, but we're not really seeing those as any significant ignition factor.
And then, have many of these fires been ignited by homeless encampments? Because I heard some being reported as starting that way.
No, and specifically, the fires we've had here in San Diego are still active and ongoing investigations that, at this point, I can't comment on, and the fires in Los Angeles that causes are also in investigation and have not been released yet.
And, I'm sorry, I'm going to try to share the wealth here, but so far, you're the point of the spear. But, you know, Nathan and I wrote that board letter for the late last helicopter. In living in a fire area, high-fire area, have we been able to use it for any night drops up to now? We've had the helicopter for, what, two years?
Again, Supervisor, we are not currently flying at night.
And why is that?
I'm going to defer that one, I think, to the Sheriff's Department here.
Supervisor, we actually took delivery of the helicopter last year, at the end of the year November of 2023. During that time, it's actually been down for maintenance for a total of eight months. Anytime you have a brand-new aircraft, there is a break-in period, especially a newer model of an aircraft. All of the maintenance issues that we've had to deal with have been warranty items. When we took delivery of it, essentially, there was a hard and fast, we're not going to fly this right now. It took a little bit of time for the manufacturer to get that squared away. Over and above that, the train-up period for pilots on separate aircraft or separate aircraft platforms can be extensive. Although our older single-engine Bell 205 helicopters that are the backbone of our fire fleet right now look very similar to the new helicopters that we're transitioning to, our older helicopters are 50-plus years old. They're the iconic Vietnam-era UE helicopter. The new Bell 412 is, it's head and shoulders above, it's a phenomenal platform, but there's a transition period for our fires to switch over to that. And it's not just firefighting, it's completely relearning emergency protocols in the new aircraft. So it is an extended period. We actually planned on having our first water drops coming into last fire season, but because of the maintenance issue, we didn't. We have had the 412 drop water on daylight operations, but we're simply not there for our personnel to fly at night.
The concern I have is, people, pilots leave the military all the time. We, I have the good fortune of being related to a pilot, and when he went to the airlines, his training period was significantly smaller. Although everybody who joined never flew that platform, but they all learned the platform, and Jim probably can speak to it much more. Some were even helicopter pilots who are now flying jumbo jets. So, the concern I have is the sense of urgency to have that night capacity. We're talking about buying more helicopters, but if they're not functioning at their full capacity, it's hard for me to go back to my district and say, well, we bought them, but we're just not using them. And I get, it's got to be in working order, and if there's manufacturer defects that you're working through, I certainly get. But if we are a year from now, or two years from now, still waiting for a pilot can fly at night, then I have to question, what's the parameters that you're using? Because I bet you, we can find somebody. I don't find it acceptable that we don't have the capacity. Now, I get there are things in control and things that we don't control, but if it's something that we do control, when you look at the devastation of LA, the urgency of getting that helicopter with that capacity was one of my campaign promises, because I live in Harbison Canyon. And we normally don't like to miss out on any fire that starts in San Diego. And so for, you know, the people I represent, this is critical to their safety. And we all know what a fantastic job our firefighters have done in sense of over the last few years, catching fires early enough that they're fewer than 20 acres, and we can put them out all in the same day, where if they spin out of control, all of a sudden you have an LA circumstance like we did with the Cedar Fire and the Witch Creek Fire. So, you know, I really like to, I'm not making a judgmental statement, but that's what I'm going to be looking at moving forward, because we have to have that capacity. And I think sometimes, if the fire's not in your neighborhood, you don't feel the heat. So, then, I have another question, slightly off-base, and that is, have we, we went through this before in the Cedar Fire, where it was devastating. We lost over 2,000 homes, we, people died. We've improved and expanded our infrastructure, and FEMA fairly recently changed how they do claims. And are we thinking in terms of how to address that? Because I noticed that there's new technologies where people are using drones to map out and have it on file, our infrastructure, so that we can contrast the damage immediately. Have we looked at that, or what's the status of that?
Supervisor, through the chair. We have that technology now. For example, when I went to the Eaton Fire, that first day, I'd estimated about 5,000 structures had been destroyed. What we do is, that night, we had a flight, essentially an infrared flight. Those images of the current situation are compared to the base layer maps. And so, within a few hours, and we manually go through, our intel staff in Sacramento goes through, and we had pretty accurate projections within the first eight hours of the fire, of the lower damage. And as you state, getting those, and then also immediately, while the fire's still burning, bringing in our- bringing in our defense, or I'm sorry, our damage inspection teams is critically important. And for that level of fire, we had over 50 damage inspection teams on the ground. Those were done within the first five days. And it's critically important, because we need to get that information to Director Tony to get through the CIO for disaster declarations, proclamations. We have to have the initial damage report done, so that when people go to fill out not only their insurance claim, is step one, their FEMA application, step two, we have to have those. So the second that we know that structures have been impacted and destroyed, we have already started that damage inspection process. And if it's large enough, we'll leverage that, that technology.
And is there any value to having a baseline initially? So I know in my house, I've had to evacuate more than once. Thank God for the cloud, because I used to have VCR, VCHs hidden all around the county. Now I can just go through with my phone, open every drawer, pick an inventory. It's not 100% accurate, but it's going to remember a lot more than my memory can.
So we have the base layer maps, they exist now. And we certainly encourage people through the work that Director Tony and I do and the sheriff, at the community level, to do exactly those things, right? It's part of the preparedness kit and making sure you have documentation, that you have backup copies of all your important papers. Certainly filming your house is one of the most important things you can do, and storing that, whether it be in the cloud or off-site, because at some point, you're going to have to fill out that insurance claim, right, to come back in and document the damage. So we do a lot of work in this space and the preparedness area, and really try and educate people that that's part of it. And I don't know, Director Tony has anything to add?
Yes, Supervisor Anderson, and if you're referring to public infrastructure as well...
Yeah, well, I think in terms of what I go through, then I think in terms of, we've got freeways, we've had infrastructure, and sometimes, you know, when you ask for a map, the county's slow to get it. So I'm just thinking, do we have something, the tips of our fingers for all the infrastructure that may have to be replaced?
Right, and our land use and environment group, you know, would be responsible for that. They do a great job with maintenance logs, et cetera, because of those documentations, photos. That's what FEMA, that's what CAL OES will ask for on reimbursement claims for damage. So within Luge, they have those systems. And again, on the personal level, by all means, film your house, film your possessions, cars, et cetera. We encourage that at the community level.
But we have a baseline for all our bridges, all our roads, all our infrastructure, right now?
Yes, yeah, we do.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Keep up the great work. I certainly, when you, when you fly by, I always wave, so give you a thumbs up. So keep up the good work.
Supervisor Montgomery Stapp.
Yes, thank you so much for being here in the presentation. I just wanted to get clarity, since I wasn't here during the time the supervisor brought the item to get the additional helicopter unit. It sounded like through the exchange that it is not operating at night. And so can you explain to me how a maintenance issue would only affect operation at one time of, in a 24-hour period? Or is it just not online at all? Because I didn't, I didn't understand that.
Thank you, Supervisor. That's a good question. There are components within the helicopter that we do not have the capacity to repair ourselves. What that means is, the airship's dragged into a hangar, a major component, like in this case, the transmission, had to be physically removed from the helicopter, and then the entire transmission was shipped back to Piney Flats, Tennessee, so they could completely dismantle it, rebuild it from scratch, and then ship it back to us. So that, that took a two-and-a-half to three-month evolution just for that one particular item. When we received the helicopter, we noticed that there was something with the tail rotor gearbox that was problematic. That was fairly easy for, I mean, it's that big. So we were able to remove it, ship it back, get another one en route to us, and then put the helicopter back in service, so that we could continue training up and working on emergency protocols. So it really comes down to the severity and the level of maintenance required for a specific problem.
Okay, and so the, the helicopter unit is functioning sometimes? That even though there are maintenance issue, continual ongoing maintenance issues?
So we have, we have three different helicopter platforms right now. We have Bell 407s, which are patrol helicopters. They operate day and night, and having four of those helicopters allows us to maintain an AM and a PM shift, so they go basically from 7:00 AM until 2:00 or 3:00 at night, and maintain one of the helicopters. Unfortunately, a helicopter's not really like a car. I mean, you, we all know you change your oil every 5,000 to 7,000 miles. Aircraft, it's landed, do fluid checks every 25 hours of flight time, then there's another set of maintenance protocols at 100 hours, and then another set of maintenance protocols as you get up toward 1,000 hours, and then there's an annual. So it's much more extensive with rotary wing aircraft than it is even with a regular airplane.
Okay, okay. And I was, my questions were just kind of following up on the supervisor's question about the one, I think, unit that, that I guess the board supported prior to me being here. Just want to make sure that we're functioning as much as possible with the resources that we have, and if there are any maintenance issues that are more than a timing issue, but a resource issue, of course, letting us know, I think, is important as well. But thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now go to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 16 requests to speak on this item, six in person, 10 requesting to speak by phone. Also note, we received four e-commerce, three in favor, one in opposition. Any individuals that requested to speak on item 18 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speaker, starting with the individual in favor, individuals in favor, followed by those in opposition of this item. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. I will, I will be calling you in groups of three, so please listen for your name. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals, starting with the individuals in favor, Robert Gurman, followed by Pam. And then they'll be followed by the first individual in opposition, Alan C. You'll have two minutes to address the board, and I'll ask you to please state your name for the audio record.
Robert, Citizens Against Gillespie's Expansion Low Flying Aircraft. We support this item 18. We request you include a on-the-aviation-side fire station at Gillespie Field Airport. This hand, oh, I didn't bring them up, damn it. The handout shows two accidents at Gillespie, one at the end of 2024 and one at the beginning of 2025. Fire is the most dangerous concern in an aircraft crash. Gillespie Field is home to San Diego County Airport's Administration Office and its personnel. The biggest hangar of the county of San Diego is at Gillespie. An airpark with million-dollar hangars that you have seen. County Sheriff's Aviation Department, what you just heard, eight helicopters. San Diego Air and Space Museum with dozens of vintage aircraft, priceless. FAA Tower, San Diego Gas and Electric Hangar with very expensive communications and equipment. General Atomic, one of the biggest defense contractors in the world, GA has four expensive large jets with employees and support equipment. Flight Schools with students, many from foreign countries. And the Cafe, my favorite. Gillespie needs an onsite fire station, state-of-the-art, to handle the broad spectrum of fire concerns at our number-one airport. Thank you. Oh, I got 31 minutes, or 31 seconds. Any questions? Well, I hope you include a new station at Gillespie Field. Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in opposition, allegedly Audra, Mark, and Consuelo. If I've called your name, please come forward. As speakers are coming forward, I'd also like to note that we did receive one individual registered their support but did not wish to address the board.
All right. Okay, here we go. Consuelo here. So arson is not climate change. Arson is the reason for these fires. The only thing wild is the fact that people are not connecting the dots regarding these fires and floods. Reminder to the ones not paying attention, they have mostly, if not all, resulted in land grabs. Thanks, BlackRock. There are firefighters who don't realize or equate the result of damage and the severity to the fact that these fires are due, these fires going on are due to the electric vehicles. We see with our neighbors in LA, where every other car there seems to be an EV, that these lithium batteries burn longer and higher, at higher temperatures. Now regarding all this technology that's being developed for our safety, again, it will be used for tracking and surveillance of the gullible, fearful masses. Fear Factor, another excuse for Big Brother to keep track of the clueless participants. Please note, they present these items in the heat of the moment to ensure the public will just go along with it without question. Reminder, all of these resources and technology is for protecting, is for protection of the system and not you. The goal is to reach as many people as possible to ensure, when the time comes, the people will be easily corralled. Do not register your phones. Time to unplug your TVs and start thinking critically. No conspiracy theories about it. Stop being so easily controlled by fear. Stop being so easily fooled. They are purposely orchestrating all of this. Hello, UN Agenda, we're here.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Andrew. And that's your query, Tara?
And state your name.
Alan C., thank you. Yeah, Alan C., Tara, if you want to look up, and that's your query about evacuation routes. Egress, we've been promised since 88 to expand the freeways. Has not happened. Why aren't there yet? And for Joe, I've got Matt from Sandag, you know what they have? They have remove road lanes, put in concrete barriers for managed toll lanes. There is your answer about your stupid egress. And I'm all about prevention, not fight fires, but let's do prevention. AB 1054, back in 2019, our legislature's governor passed $20 billion with a rate increase not to prevent firefighters from the 1921 power line that wiped out over 1,000 hopes of paradise, but in case it got sued again. Why is an STG sitting here? Where are the homeless advocates? Why aren't they sitting there? The cause, the two biggest cause of wildfires, the biggest carbon footprint, is the power lines, is the drug tents. What are we going to do about that? Why is an STG sitting right freaking there and answering up? Why are these wildfires? The wildfire was caused by power lines. The Lilac power, you know, was that caused by? At 1:00 in the freaking morning? Take a wild guess, you already know. By the drug tents, caused by Harris, who allowed drug tents to run Freeport-Pope 47. When are you guys going to go after and fix the solutions to prevent wildfires? I've said it before, I said it again, let's look at prevention. STG should be sitting right there and answering up. Man on the Moon 69, yet today, we can't even keep the lights on. Bury the power lines. Did you hear that? Bury the power lines. That's how are you going to fix a problem? I yield back.
My person uses the name Audra, so if we weren't spraying nano-thermite in the skies, it's falling down on the land, it'd probably help with the fires, and if there weren't directed energy weapons as well. But it's a little bit terrifying to think about what you guys are talking about. I don't feel very confident in the plans, because you're expecting that everybody would have a cellphone that's working in order to then go and look for some kind of place or, or direction on where to go. And I think that it's important that you would beforehand educate people in some manner to let them know, hey, if this is your area, maybe have like town hall meetings or something like that in each community, to show them, these are the routes that you could possibly take. If your cellphone's not working and you see the fires, I mean, because otherwise, you're just expecting them to know. And they're not going to. Not everybody is going to. Not everybody has that ability. And so I think for preparedness, you should be making sure that all communities are prepared. And to think about the, the equipment that you guys have, I mean, Riverside has a really incredible fleet, actually, to fight fires, and they do it at night. And I feel like it's a little bit negligent to be purchasing equipment that you should have sent it back if you had all of these issues from the get-go. I don't understand why you would keep it and then have to have it out of service for so long, and then to spend more money to fix it, because now we're, we're without it. So I don't know if you need to talk to Riverside and see what they're doing that's with their fleet, and who you should purchase it from? Because if you're purchasing it from companies that, like, give you a piece of crap that you can't even use, I mean, that's a lot of money that we spend to get that, and it's wasteful.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark, so first of all, some of the fires are being caused by homeless. I'll play a video from Joe Rogan later demonstrating that, but your evacuation plans, it takes away owners' rights to be on their own property, which is a typical thing that government does. It takes something and acts like it's doing something good. I actually know of a friend who lived in San G. Years ago, there was a fire. There was a bush on the side of his building. One of the tenants put it out. The, the building was fine. If they had all been evacuated, the whole building would have burned down because of that one bush that somebody just put out. So the UN absolutely has the greatest motive for doing this. They openly say that they want to control and inventory everything in the world, including us, and that they want people out of the rural areas. Now, it's true that there's some pretty pissed-off, not, not all at all, not everyone, but there are a few homeless people that are really angry, and they're probably setting the fires in the nice areas. But when you talk about the rural areas that they want everyone out of, it's a no-brainer that the people, the richest people in the world who want to rule the world, who have the greatest technology in the world, who own the insurance companies that raise the prices on everyone, have the greatest motive for doing this. And they openly say they want everyone out of those areas. Now, here's a Rogan video.
This is a whiny liberal, it's fucking climate change! Wake up! No, it's arson, you fucking idiots! But they, they're more inclined to use fire to get their anger out.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, a policeman actually caught people lighting things on fire. He filmed it. He put it up on his Instagram.
Really?
Yeah, 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 in the middle of the firestorm, people were lighting things on fire to contribute to the fire.
Wow.
Catch the people setting the fires. You guys never talk about it. Total negligence on your part. Catch them!
Thank you. Final call for Pam.
Excuse me, is it, is it possible, I signed up for item 16, it's more prudent for me to speak on item 18. My name is Aaron Bratton. There, there wasn't really a specific topic, it, it, you know, it centers around wildfire solution for San Diego County, and it's more prudent with all the...
Andrew, is that, is that okay?
If you'd like to change your speaker slip to item 18, we'll take it.
Yeah, please. It's more prudent now with all the officials.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, thank you.
So hello, board members. My name is Aaron Bratton. I've never spoke before, never attended a meeting. This is basically, I want to kind of present something that, that a solution may be for San Diego regarding wildfires. If you take the 20 most destructive wildfires in California history, 15 of them have happened in the last 10 years. And when these firestorms happen with 80 mile-an-hour winds, they get out of control really fast. It's probably a matter of time when another one hits here. The Palisades Fire up in Los Angeles, you know, destroyed nearly 7,000 structures. Meanwhile, within the community, there was nearly 70 million gallons of water sitting right where we needed to protect those, those homes. Thousands and thousands of swimming pools sit. This is very common within San Diego as well. All of the, the witch fire, same thing, pools everywhere, and they go unused. Entire neighborhoods burned to the ground while we leave millions, tens of millions of gallons of water just sitting there. We can give our firefighters the tools to, to basically use this. There's portable units capable of throwing water over 100... There's portable units capable of throwing water over 100 yards. We can get these in the community wildfire protection plans, get a plan in place. We design the systems to go into backyards. We get them in place in case there's a major wildfire about to burn homes down. These guys can use these tools and get them, you can command these wirelessly from a command station, and we don't have to let our communities burn down. It's just a matter of time till the next firestorm comes and hits our communities. We can come up with a way to make this work. The water is already there, and there's no fleet of aircraft and no water district to come close to delivering this amount of water in short order. It's already where you need it. We just need to come to a plan. Everybody come together and put that water to use. It happens again and again and again. We need to put this water to use. It's right there. Who wants to have their house burned down while their pool's sitting full? And I mean, there's examples of individuals that use, okay, sorry. Thank you.
Well, now here from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
Hi, this is Dory. I'm a resident of Valley Center located in a very high fire hazard severity zone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to comment on item 18, but it overlaps from 16 and 17. After watching the fires in LA and Moss Landing Battery Storage Plan, we cannot wait for another disaster to strike. In Valley Center, we've had too many fires, battery storage fires. We've had amazing partnerships with our Valley Center Fire District, Reservations, and Cal Fire. It's wonderful to have our firefighters know and understand our landscape, but it'll take an ongoing planning approach. For example, for clearing a brush, brush management, expanded fire resources such as planes and helicopters and pilots, water tenders, review of our open spaces, additional reservoirs, water infrastructure, maybe even the ocean, and additional evacuation routes. We need all of these tools to prepare. Specifically in Valley Center, we can't afford to have placed one more battery storage facility in our area. We've already experienced multiple fires, and we'd like to see more investments by the county in hydro energy. Fiscally, it makes more sense to invest in preventative measures than to pay for homelessness that, as a result of fires. Thank you.
Thank you. Now here from the next caller.
I think we're more prepared than LA. And that last speaker in person with the idea about pools is what saved a few houses in LA, and it's a great idea. The same that the presentation or part of it wasn't in the agenda document on the 22nd before the Border II fire. I'm not impressed by the Cal Fire and Sheriff Department inability to put down, put out the Border II brush fire. Brush fire, which grows to 6,000 acres and stays there for at least four days, let alone the health hazards caused by the smoke, it's not acceptable. We need to tell these people no and let our county fire do their job, which frankly, they seem to be doing better. Not sure, by the way, why the sheriff evacuated Del Zero when the fire was miles away. But anyway, no one died. But after all the investments and planning we have done, I think it's ridiculous to turn it over to the state, which is a lot of disasters, like letting PG&E off the hook for Paradise fire damages and death caused by wooden equipment and not clearing underbrush, or like allowing EVs and BES and higher fires and toward the danger of reignition and high temperature in multi-metal hairlooms or cars fleeing the fires. And after cleanup is a lot tougher. So let's, it would, hello, Quay. We know what's better for the county. You know, let's get the
Thank you. Now here from the next caller.
Climate change is here, or more specifically, climate catastrophe is here. Because as we just saw earlier this month in Los Angeles with the Palisades Fire, we saw in Alphena with the fire, we've seen this with several other fires in the LA area, and then more recently had the Border II fire, which thankfully didn't burn down any homes to my knowledge. But nonetheless, this is all because of climate change. Anyone who says, oh, but it's not climate change, it's arson. Okay, maybe an arsonist started a flame, which by the way, that hasn't been, the investigation's still pending. But an arsonist cannot make the wind gusts blow at 100 miles per hour. Those wind gusts are how the fires grow. The Palisades Fire was fueled by very, very fast wind gusts. I watched the footage on YouTube. It looked like, it looked like the fucking apocalypse. It was devastating. Never seen footage like that in Southern California in my life. So anyone who tells me that this isn't climate change is full of it. I'm very thankful that we have teams that notify people when it's time to evacuate. I'm thankful to watch through Genesys and apps like those that let people know in real time, okay, families need to evacuate and stuff. Thank you for everyone that's helping, you know, help put out the fires. Thank our firefighters. But again, this comes back to how people voted. And yes, Alan, when you wear a Trump Never Surrender skirt to a public meeting, I'm going to blame people like you for voting for the shenanigans in Washington, D.C. right now, them trying to condition aid to
Thank you. We're now here from the next caller.
Well, Kevin, it's hilarious to listen to. So let's go ahead and talk about the fire. Let's go ahead and rewind, clock back to 2003, when majority of San Diego burnt up. I believe we applied a bunch of new regulations that we seem to have forgotten all about in around 2019. We stopped clearing out areas. We stopped fining people for overgrowth yards. Well, I mean, for a, for a state that believes in the climate, like, that we're going to burn up, Kevin, could you please explain, or anyone, can, can anyone explain to me why we decided to stop cleaning up the side of the road for a period of time? Why we stopped fining people for overgrowth yards? Why we don't use goats just to clean out overgrowth? No, we need to go ahead and find ways to extract money from the people. That's what the object is. We need to come up with this climate god when in reality, it was the fact that we chose, because of the pandemic, not to apply our safety measures. And then two years later, we come up, I mean, hell, it was presented in this presentation. In 2002, you decided, or 2022, you decided to re-implement them. Re-implement them. It's not like you were cleaning out the gutters because houses flood, not because of the overrain, just because the gutters were full. Because you guys don't want to fuck with Mother Nature. You guys want to see San Diego burn. Then you could come out to be the right
Thank you. Now here from the next caller.
Is truth ready, set, go? How about instead of the continued negligence of serious issues, we start addressing what's actually causing these fires that seem to only exist in the state of California? Meacham said, we're addressing electric vehicle fires every day, and there's no comment on what Alan calls the drug tent fires. Instead of using the excuse of earthquakes, let's start building homes of sustainable and resilient bricks, or maybe even plastic trash bins or grass, because those are the things that magically survived the Palisades Fire. How about then X starts taking evacuation routes as seriously as they take those unused $1 million mile bike lanes? Until the battery energy storage sites are moved, the county will be at risk of fires. Preparedness requirements by myself, Marion Hall. Number one, buffer zones of 1 mile per 75 megawatt away from hospitals, houses, schools, and jails. Two, at least two paved 15-foot-wide evacuation routes within 100 yards of a BES facility. Three, sheltering place facilities every 10 miles. Four, wind pattern, blue modeling. Five, BES applicants must have a $10 million liability bond. Six, a one-year pre-notice period to affect the communities within a five-mile radius. Seven, mandated installation and daily test of smoke detectors and heat sensors. Eight, a community liaison or committee to address concerns. Nine, all safety incidents and noise level readings documented and made public. Ten, adequate fire suppression agents on site of BES facilities. Eleven, metal mesh over BES facilities to reduce exploding embers. Twelve, a fire mitigation fund to fund extra firefighters. Thirteen, a displacement and relocation mitigation fund to pay for people's decreased home values and homes burning down. Because it's not an if, it's a win for BES fires, just like electric vehicle fires and lithium batteries. So lastly, good job, Joel, on the questions. And to the firefighters who know this is not climate change that we are witnessing before I. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any of my fellow board members have any additional questions or comments? Do we have a motion to receive the report?
So
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Anderson and a second by Supervisor Montgomery Step. Please vote.
Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, we will break now. We'll reconvene for, after lunch at 1:45. Is that enough time for my colleagues? Because there are 35 minutes. Okay, 1:45, back here. Thank you.
I love the paints. It feels nice. It feels very, very relaxing.
Art has long been used as a therapeutic tool to help people express their thoughts and feelings. And art tells a story. Art can share an artist's journey.
For clients who struggle to put their emotions into words, art can be a powerful outlet.
It's amazing to see clients who are normally reserved and don't talk much and don't do much art, to reengage that passion that they have. It feels good to see these clients come out of their shell.
The art show is designed to be an event for the artists and the attendees, with all